I'd like to call to order the July 17, 2018 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Good morning. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on the Metro Cable 14 Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, July 20 at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices.
Okay. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, welcome back, everyone. Board's been on recess for three weeks, so I'm sure everybody's just on top of their game today.
(laughing)
Did you hear the report this morning that high heat lowers your, what was it, IQ? I don't know, 13 points? So, anyway, so let's get started.
Okay. For your consent matters, items 1 through 55, I need a motion to drop item number 3. authorize the Director of Airports to execute the Common Use Airport Lounge Concession Agreement.
I'm moved.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Also, for item 33, you are introducing an ordinance and continuing that to July 24 for adoption. It's the repealing and reenacting county fire codes contained in Code Chapter 17.04. For item 39, I need a motion to continue that to August 7.
Which one was that?
August, or...
Which item?
Item 39.
Thank you.
Authorize the Director of the Department of Transportation to execute an agreement to improve the levee road along San Joaquin River between Reclamation District 341 and County of Sacramento.
And I'd like to speak to that before we do the continuance, if I could.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I do have one item on consent I'd like to drop, but I need to give an explanation at the appropriate time.
I'm going to let you circle back to that item in just one second. I have one more item. Item 53, I need a motion to drop that. That's the resolution recognizing Paul Deveraux on the occasion of his retirement.
To move.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Mr. County Executive?
Item number 7. Madam Clerk, can you read that in the record?
Sure. Item number 7, approval of the exchange agreement with the City of Sacramento for the Panhandle Annexation Area, replacing the agreement from May 18, 2010.
Members of the Board, I'm requesting this item to be dropped because we were notified yesterday evening that there is a formal requirement in state law that we're supposed to notify every Board member and the Executive Director for the district that the annexation's going to impact. We've been working with Realinda for some time, and particularly this amendment...
Years.
For years. For this amendment, we've been working with existing Executive Director and their attorney since fall of '17, but we did not do that formal notice. We would like to do the notice and then come back to the Board with the annexation. City of Sacramento staff is here. We've advised them that that's the procedural thing we're doing, is to go back and satisfy that and bring it back to you.
So, we'll have a date certain, or just are you dropping it?
I'm dropping it, ma'am, so I can do the notification and come back.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you. I just wanted to add to our county CEOs coming on the subject that this action that we're taking, well, that we're taking to drop the matter today should be clearly interpreted by the district that we certainly take seriously their concerns to be noticed. But I also want to point out that there's been a long tradition, I guess, or legacy of our executive staffs when they do meet, and there's a common understanding in those meetings about prospective action based on agreements in those meetings. We haven't necessarily had to formally do this in the past. So, I view this as belt and suspenders, quite frankly, to make sure that this district is notified, and I look forward to having this back before us very soon.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, no any question. Well, I did, I want to go back to, yeah, comments. Flo, back to item 33 before I get to 39. You said the ordinance...
Oh, this is the ordinance repealing and reenacting county fire codes contained in Code Chapter 17.04.
Okay. I would like to ask, and we could continue this for a week, Mr. County Executive, there are some things contained in here, and it may be what the state has legislated, but particularly as it pertains to the rural areas and distance from, their fire hydrants are pretty nonexistent in the rural areas, and requirements for fire sprinkling. If I read correctly, the, there were separation, there were some requirements that if you were 3,000 feet from an existing fire, now that's being reduced to 300 feet. Again, I'm going to have some understanding about what the implications may be for requiring fire sprinklers in rural residences, and there are a couple other questions I had as well. So, unless there's any objections, I'd like to continue this for one week, Madam Chair.
Is there any time constraint on passing this?
Not that I'm aware of.
There's no time restraint specific to this.
So, I may be with either Mike or Chief Building Inspector, and I know the Fire District's been working on this for some time, and there's a lot contained here, there's a lot of strike-through, a lot of references, and then there's some code here, NFPA, and what that means, and such and such, so to try to get an understanding of how that, what that means to a, you know, a builder or occupant of a building, I want to get some understanding behind that, if I could, so.
So, what's the date we're continuing it to?
July 24.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Then I move that we continue item 33 to July 24.
Please vote.
Continue.
Your screen isn't working.
Yeah.
So, you want a verbal?
Yeah, let's just do a verbal call, please.
So, repeat the item again. It's number 33 that we're continuing to...
Yes. Continuing to July 24. And I didn't get the second.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Noes, abstention? Item passes.
Okay. And then, if I could, then item 39 is going to be continued, and I had a chance to speak with Mr. Penrose and Mr. Gill yesterday afternoon, and I think it's understood that certainly this county has been very cooperative in working with reclamation districts and other agencies when there are levee repairs to, this is an outgrowth of some of the damages that occurred in the '97, '98 floods, where there are levee repairs that we then, if it's appropriately prepared for us, we do put the road surface back down and continue to maintain that for public access for a variety of reasons, access to people's homes, to businesses, recreational, and obviously emergency provider access throughout the Delta. In this case, and again, I want to thank certainly Mr. Penrose and the Department of Transportation, Mr. Mogesi and others who worked on this for some time, and I think what needs to be as part of the continuance, and I know it's understood by staff, but I wanted to verbalize it, is that we need to be clear about this reference to county road standards, that the county road standard is taken from both state and federal highway code requirements, and the state in this case, in rebuilding the levee, wanted to come in with a very narrow pathway across the top of the crown of the levee. We, for safety reasons and for access for members of the public and property owners who have homes and businesses in the Delta, have maintained a very consistent position, not just county standards, but state and federal standards for public roads that have minimum lane width. We've required that, and we've required certainly new construction in this county, but certainly in repairs and in improvements to roads. And so, in my conversations with staff yesterday, and I think consistent with our conversation with the state, both the recitals and the agreement, but also in the staff report, need to reflect, I think, the good work that our county has done, being cooperative. We are standing up for a half a million dollars to improve a road section there that, again, is very critical to, to safety, but also to access for private property owners, as well as public properties, in this case, on Sherman Island. And so, the reason for continuance is, obviously, we are making good on our commitment that we've worked with the state with for some time, but I think that the, both the recitals and the staff report need to clearly reflect our position consistent with state and federal law, and why we are actually putting the money up. It's not just because we're providing funds for additional pavement width, there are some other concerns that are embedded in that, and so I appreciate, I know I've talked to Mike at length about this, and actually, Mike was part of the original crew of folks in meeting with the state that helped to bring this to the table. So, I would propose we continue this to August 7 and come back with a modified staff report, and hopefully...
I have a question on that also, that I'd like you to address, and that is, why does this road have to be built to county standards to the point where we have to spend money on a road and on a levee we don't own? Why can't it? The state's only requiring a little bit narrower road, why don't we just build the narrower road and let the state pay for it all?
Supervisor Peters, in our review of it, the standard that the state would want to apply to this road is not applicable. It's not safe. It doesn't provide correct access for emergency vehicles, as well as regular public circulation. It is a public roadway. It's in our road, our maintained road mileage system, so it is one that we have...
People can drive their cars on top of the levee?
Yes. It's a paved road. It's a levee road that circles Sherman Island, and so it accesses all the, all the properties along there. It's a public road to us, and so they wanted to build an 18-foot standard. It's way too narrow for that sort of application. We went through a number of discussions with them, demonstrating the minimum requirement that you'd have on a rural road, a rural public road, and that, that's where we got into this distinction, where they have a certain standard that they only want to compete to or participate in, and we've said that that would not be acceptable, willing to bring some county revenue to it to make it an acceptable, safe, accessible road, public road. And in the future, we may have further discussions, frankly, with these, with the state water resources about what their standard is, because they're trying to apply a maintenance road standard to a public roadway that the citizens of Sacramento County are using, so.
And that they should pay for the whole thing?
Exactly. I'm sorry. Exactly.
Exactly. That's been...
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Continue 39.
Do we have a motion?
August 7, it's August 7, I believe, so give time to modify the staff report.
Please vote.
Yes.
Is the screen back up? Okay.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And I do still need a motion to drop item number 7.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Does that cover it, Mr. Natoli?
Yes, that's all I had.
Supervisor Frost? Any questions, comments? Mrs. Serna? Kennedy? Hey, Madam Clerk, I'd like the record to reflect, I'm recusing on items 34, 45, and number 2, due to a potential conflict of interest.
You have, I'm sorry, you said 2, 34, and 45?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to consent?
Remain or consent?
Okay. A second for consent?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from items 2, 34, and 45, and this is also excluding items 3, 7, 39, and 53.
In our consent, we had several appointments. Bruce Wegstaff to be Deputy County Executive of Social Service, and Michelle Calais, Director of Child, Family, and Adult Service Services, and Peter Bealenson, the Director of Health Services. Mr. Bealenson is not here, and I, Bruce, thank you for coming back, making all those arrangements on your former retirement to join us. Would you, do you want to say anything?
Well, I'll just say, Madam Chair, I know you've got a very full agenda, but it's, it really is a pleasure to be back, and I must tell you that when Nav and I first talked about me coming in to hold things down until he found a permanent person, I wasn't thinking about the long term, but once I got back and started working with this executive team, and our department heads, and all of our employees and staff, and all of you, it really felt good to be back. So, I'm very excited about it. I know we've got some tough issues to tackle, but I'm confident with this team. We're going to be successful with that, and really looking forward to it.
Well, we feel the same. It's good to have you back. Is Michelle here?
Yes, she is. Here she is.
Would you like to say anything, or you have to come up to the microphone if you want to, you don't have to say anything. (laughing) Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and I wanted to say thank you to Nav, and Nancy, and Bruce for this opportunity, for making the recommendation, and certainly to all of you for approving. I've been privileged to work for the county for 22 years. It's been a great journey thus far, and I look forward to leading this new department. We've got a great staff across DCFAS, so look forward to continuing to serve the county and the community. Thank you for this opportunity.
You're ready for the next 22, right?
I'm ready for the next 22. I got it in me, I think. Well, maybe 20.
It's one of the toughest jobs in the county, and we're glad you're available to take it.
Well, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
For your next item, item 56, you are recognizing Carol Smith for 30 years of service.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Salvador Sanchez, and I'm a Human Services Program Manager for the Department of Human Assistance, and it is an honor and a pleasure to be here this morning to recognize Carol Smith for 30 years of county service. Throughout her county career, which started in June 13, 1988, Carol has achieved optimal levels of personal performance and accomplishments. Today, 30 years later, working in the capacity of a human services supervisor, she continues to assist those in need in our community. Definitely, our community is lucky to have someone like Carol who constantly demonstrates the values that define our department: compassion, integrity, trust, and innovation. Carol, again, congratulations on your 30-year anniversary, and thank you very much for being a strong and reliable member in our department.
Thank you so much. (applause)
Madam Chair, I just wanted to quickly say thank you. I came in 1988 looking for a job with the county, and I ended up with a career. I'm very grateful for the lives that we've been able to touch and to change as a result, not just of what I did, but what we did as a department, and what you guys have allowed us to do with monies that you have given to the different things that we have done. I was a part of Opportunity Knox, which was a wonderful mentorship program. I still speak to those children. I'm happy to say that in our office, every single child that was a part of the program, it was a truancy prevention program, they all graduated from high school, and lots of them are currently in college, homeowners, and doing so well. So, it's also the monies that we've been afforded. In fact, one of the children that was part of Opportunity Knox is now a part of Child Legacy. She does work for our department, and so sometimes I think we just need to be reminded that you make decisions based on what you hear and what you see, but that the money really does go to your constituents, and it makes a huge difference. So, thank you for my career. Thank you for the opportunity, and yes, they did have child labor laws that were different. I've been here for 30 years. I keep saying the same joke. And I'll probably be here, hopefully, for another at least 10 or 15. So, I thank you for your time. I thank you for the privilege. I'm grateful that Gladys, and Ann, and Bruce, they're all here along, and Deborah is here somewhere. So, we have a lot of people that stood behind me, encouraging me, encourage staff every day. I know that there is also a representative from my former union, a couple of people, but we do it together for the best that we can do for the community. So, again, thank you for your time, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for all your years of hard work.
All right.[1117.63][1117.63](applause)
And if you're here for 15 more years, Supervisor Natoli will be able to give you your certificate when you retire.
(laughing) I don't know about that.
Item 57 is the presentation of resolution proclaiming the week of July 15 through the 21st as probation week in Sacramento County.
Could I ask Julie Weary, the Assistant Chief Probation Officer, to come to the podium?
Good morning, Chair Peters, members of the Board. I'm Julie Weary, Assistant Chief Probation Officer. It is a pleasure to be here this morning. It's an honor to be recognized for probation week commencing July 15 through the 21st. I'm grateful to have this opportunity to honor the contributions of the officers and administrative professionals of the Sacramento County Probation Department. We are committed to protecting community safety in every district, and we are proud to be a vital partner of the local law enforcement community in Sacramento County. It is our mission to keep youth and adults accountable through supervision and help them re-enter society by providing evidence-based treatment and services. Probation officers hold an incredible range of responsibilities. Our officers meet with clients and families, conduct assessments, and provide education, referrals, and support. Probation officers prepare detailed pre-sentence investigation and social study reports for the courts. We meet with clients in their homes, on the streets, in jails, and in prisons. We conduct field operations, work in school districts, and assist other law enforcement agencies. Armed officers confiscate illegal weapons and drugs, and make arrests to keep our community safe. We also maintain and operate the Adult Day Reporting Centers and the Youth Detention Facility. Our talented administrative professionals support all of our functions. On behalf of the probation department, I look forward to accepting this resolution. I thank the Board for taking the time to recognize our probation employees, and for officially designating this week probation week in Sacramento County. Thank you. (applause)
Thank you, Julie. Wanted to take a minute and talk about the resolution. Communities across the United States recognize probation officers providing vital law enforcement services to their communities, and they designate this week in July as a time to formally express their appreciation. Sacramento County probation officers apply evidence-based practice to address the criminogenic... Yeah, pretty good. I never heard of that word before. I saw this really, this resolution. Needs of juveniles placed under probation supervision and high-risk adults placed under various kinds of supervision. The probation officers investigate and submit thousands of thorough pre-sentence reports and social study reports, which include critical information recommendation for Superior Court Judges. Our probation officers fulfill their responsibilities with dignity and humility while fostering collaboration with other law enforcement agencies between various community agencies and group, while supporting well-being of families, victims, and communities, excuse me, within the county of Sacramento. And I think everyone on the Board of Supervisors has worked with probation in their districts, and we find them to be, the officers to be, very helpful. Sometimes it's, it can be somewhat of an invisible job, and it doesn't get a lot of press, as opposed to other kinds of law enforcement, but we're very grateful for all the work and the professionalism of this organization. So, we hereby proclaim July 15 to 21, 2018, as probation supervision week in the county of Sacramento, to honor all of you. So, here's your resolution. Thank you. (applause) Oh, sure. Everybody in probation, come on down.
While everybody's coming down, I believe Supervisor Serna has...
Yeah. Thank you. What I, I certainly join the Chair and our Board in recognizing probation week, certainly all the men and women of probation, as they should be acknowledged. But what I didn't hear in the list of duties and responsibilities, which I think does warrant some mention, is the fact that this department, like many of our departments, has invested greatly in a number of charitable activities in our community, and certainly my district has been very fortunate, I think all of our districts have, to have an immense amount of volunteerism...
Thank you.
...come from probation. Most recently, Cesar Chavez Day of Service, we had, I think, 51 probation personnel and their families, including teenagers, out at the Washington Neighborhood Center to help fix that community center up. I've also joined the men and women of probation in years past at the Sacramento Food Bank, where they've shown up en masse to prepare and sort various food items to be distributed to people in need. So, I just wanted to make sure that, in addition to all that has been referenced by both our representatives today from probation and our Chair, that that too gets acknowledged because it deserves it. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you all.
Item 58, presentation of resolution and certificate of recognition awarded to, awarded for the Big Day of Service held in Orangevale and Fair Oaks.
I'd like to invite Brad Squires, the founder of Big Day of Service, and all the team leaders who were involved to come on down. It's my great pleasure, and also Supervisor Peters, to, to share about the Big Day of Service. This is an idea that came to life, you know how it is when one person has an idea, and that idea grows. And it, several months ago, there were some community members in Orangevale who decided they wanted to do some things to spruce up Orangevale, and then Fair Oaks said, "We want to be involved," and so Brad, who is one of the community leaders in Orangevale, led out and founded the Big Day of Service. And through the power of community, they brought together, their initial goal was to bring together, I think it was five projects that you were going to do when we first started talking. And by the time they came to the Big Day of Service, a few months later, it was 1,000 volunteers and 30 projects. And so, this morning, we have a video that we're going to show that, that kind of tells all about the Big Day of Service, and, and I have some certificates and a resolution on behalf of the Board that I'd like to present to the foundation, and, and then afterwards, maybe you can say a couple words, and everyone can introduce which team they were leading out in. I also want to mention, they did everything from fixing fences, building bridges, they did garbage pickup, they visited the elderly with their youth, they spruced up the schools, did a grocery store food drive. These are just some of the examples of what they did, and I think the video pictures a thousand words. So, let's watch the video, and you'll get to see what the Big Day of Service is all about. This is amazing.
We have 1,000 volunteers that are showing up here today, and we're taking on 30 projects throughout the city of Orangevale and Fair Oaks. But even beyond the projects, we're excited about the relationships that are being built amongst one another, knowing that we're not alone, and we can help each other, and that we're here for each other.
At the county, it begins with community development. It's, the heart of every community is, what do those people do to make their community great? And as you can see, Fair Oaks and Orangevale have a lot of heart, and they're doing great things. I'm excited to be a sponsor of this great event and look forward to what's coming next.
This is the past year middle school beautification project. As you can see, we're shoveling bark dust here. We have approximately 10 to 12 gardens that we're weeding, putting in 120 new fill-in plants, and distributing 35 yards of bark dust.
So, I'm Aaron Cochran. We're out here at Orangevale Parks. We've got close to 100 volunteers out here with us, and we're planting 75 trees throughout the park and the nature preserve.
We're building some foot bridges over these little creeks, so people can enjoy themselves and not have to go down in here, because over here is where the horses go. I think it's fantastic. Brings a community together. I think it's a wonderful thing.
You know, today's a great day, seeing all the people show up. We're out here at Orangevale Parks, trying to clean up some of the old fence material that's out here, trying to stack it up and put it, take it out of the way, make this much more of a natural environment here at the park.
I just really enjoy working with kids, and I want to get the kids out into the community volunteering, and let them feel the excitement of being part of volunteering. Putting the senior citizens together with the kids, I just think is a really cool opportunity.
I really wanted an opportunity to be able to make this school more beautiful for our kids, and it's really awesome that we have community members coming out.
Just everybody's kind of giving back to the local community through this, and it's amazing. Many hands make light work.
What's really exciting about this event, it's the first time that we've ever done it. It's just a really amazing thing to see the community of Fair Oaks and Orangevale come together and serve on this big day of service.
So, I'm standing here on one of the projects that we built today, a bridge in one of our parks in Orangevale. And, you know, when we first came up with this idea about six months ago, our goal was just to build one day where we united the community in service, and that has been what has taken place today. Our first-ever Big Day of Service complete. So, I just want to, again, say thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm so proud of our community for stepping up and making this an amazing day.
(applause)
I'm fortunate to have...
I'm fortunate to have the leadership in our communities that we do have. And this morning, Brad, and to all of you, thank you for everything you do. I want to present this resolution on behalf of the Board of Supervisors honoring the 2018 Big Day of Service in Orangevale and Fair Oaks community event. Whereas on May 5th, 2018, the Big Day of Service was held in Orangevale and Fair Oaks community. And the Community Foundation of Orangevale and Fair Oaks is a nonprofit organization that created the Big Day of Service. And whereas the foundation's mission is to meet the practical needs of Orangevale and Fair Oaks by creating opportunities for generosity and selflessness. And whereas the Big Day of Service is a grassroots, all-volunteer-led initiative to make a positive impact in Orangevale and Fair Oaks communities. And whereas the Big Day of Service is a time to unite the community around the idea that we can all make a difference and that we can all make things better by working together. The volunteers worked on 25 local projects. I think we were behind -- we got that number wrong, sorry. And beautify -- to beautify and improve the neighborhoods, which included cleaning up the public areas, planting trees, flowers at local schools and parks, senior care activities, preparing military care packages, and more. Community leaders ranging from representatives from Sacramento County, local organizations, businesses, churches, and individuals came together to plan this inaugural event, and the Big Day of Service is an event that shows that good things happen when people intentionally serve others and do something bigger than themselves, making a big impact in just one day. So therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Board of Supervisors of County of Sacramento, State of California, do hereby congratulate the community and members of 2018 Big Day of Service and hope to see another one in 2019. It's my pleasure to present this certificate, and I have a certificate for every one of your team leaders that maybe you can make sure they get. And at this time, if you'd like, you might want to say a couple of words.
Sure, I can say a few words. First of all, Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Peters, thank you for your support. We obviously couldn't have pulled off this event without that support. You know, we had, like Sue said, over 1,000 volunteers across the community, and it was a really special day for Orangevale and Fair Oaks. First-ever, we hope to do it again. We're expecting to do one in the spring of 2019 and hopefully make it bigger and better. So we're going to do it again. So thanks again. Anybody else want to share anything?
Do you like to just say your name and which team you led out on?
Let's do quick intros, why not?
I'm Jada Hugel, and I manage marketing and communications and led one of our projects.
I'm Andrea Scully, and I led the military care packages.
My name is Aaron Cochran, and I was in charge of the tree planting. And I'd like to say that the -- it's events like this that I'm proud to be a part of because moving to Orangevale, we moved there to buy our forever home so that I can raise my little daughters in a community. So thank you.
Jack McGurk, I'm one of the Board members of the Community Foundation and worked on the intake for people getting glasses, kids getting free glasses taken care of. And the one thing I'd like to comment on is, when we all met at the end of this, it was like infectious. Everybody wanted to do it again next year, and they all had ideas for new projects. So I think this is only going to grow, and it's a great thing for our community. Thank you.
I'm Ryan Jacobs, and we worked on one of the schools, and just it was really cool to see people working together, people who had no skills going out there and learning how to do some of this community service, and people who had a ton of skills that were leading them. So it was a really great opportunity. Thank you.
My name's Paul Winter, and I'm a Board member on the foundation, so I was more behind the scenes of this. And I just joined the Board this year, and I'm just amazed at the way the -- especially Brad, can just get things organized. And his passion for the community, it's been real rewarding for me. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Steve Morgan. I oversaw four projects, and I just want to -- what really captured my attention was how grateful the recipients of the work that we did were for us coming out and just, you know, because they're all volunteers themselves, and they work hard, and they just appreciate us being out there supporting them. So thank you.
Great. All right. So thanks again, everybody, for the support again, and we again hope to do it again. Bigdayofservice.com if anybody's interested in learning more or doing one in another community. We'd love to help spawn other events like this around Sacramento County.
Can I just say that I -- when Supervisor Frost said building bridges, I thought that was a metaphor. It was -- that was actually what you did.
Build a bridge without the Army Corps of Engineers.
Right. More power to you.
I forgot to mention, Brad is the gentleman who manages the -- who has the food bank in Orangevale, so he's involved in the community quite a bit. So would you like to get a photo?
Yeah, that'd be great.
For your next matter, this is a hearing matter. Item number 59, county service area number 10, benefit zone number three. Public hearing on the written report of service charges for fiscal year 2018-19 and adoption of resolution confirming the report and fixing charges.
Good morning. Bob Davison, Division Chief of the County Engineering Division. On May 23rd, staff provided the written report of operating requirements and service charges to the Board and also set this public hearing for the written report and the service charges to be levied in county service area number 10, benefit zone three. County Service Area 10 Benefit Zone 3 provides trip reduction services to the North Vineyard Station, the Florin Vineyard, and the Wild Hawk North Developments. The service charges are tied to the Consumer Price Index, so this year, it's proposed to increase the service charges from what was levied last year by 3.22% based upon the increase in the Consumer Price Index. The highlights of this year's budget include $95,000 for trip reduction services that are performed by the 50 Quarter TMA. And included in those trip reduction services are the van pool services. As your Board is aware, in 2017, the first van pool was up and running. In the previous years since 2017, there are now three van pools that are in service, and three more, three additional, are included in this year's budget. So with this fiscal year budget, there will be six van pools up and running in county service area number 10. The other highlight of the budget is there's a little more than $100,000 to put into reserves, and that is mainly to provide the initial transit shuttle services that are proposed to be provided. Last year, it was reported by the Department of Transportation that initial transit service could begin when you have 3,000 to 4,000 dwelling unit equivalents in benefit zone three. And as of now, the proposed charges for 2018-19 include charges for 2,154 dwelling unit equivalents. So I think we're a little bit more than halfway there to the initial implementation of transit. So with that, either I or Department of Transportation staff can answer any questions that you might have, and I recommend that you adopt the resolution confirming the written report for fiscal year 2018-19 and also authorizing the service charges for the same fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Scully.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Bob, for the update, certainly consistent with the written report. Couple of quick questions, and as relates to the van pool implementation and the additional vans that are proposed to come online, is someone tracking then the number of rides? Because obviously, that's part of the purpose, is to offer alternative modes of transportation or the opportunity for carpooling, vanpooling, and such. So as a part of this, is there some tracking of that, that in van pool A, there are five folks, and you save trips, you know, daily for folks that are participants in those van pools? And again, I'm not familiar with the exact structure of how all that works, but I guess my question is, that should be part of the data, I guess. I suggest that anyway, that to track that, because again, that provides substantive background in addition to having a van pool that operates, that there are X amount of participants on average, or whatever it is, if there's an exact count. So maybe you could offer some clarification behind that.
Sure. And my staff deals with the levy and the assessment, and DOT staff deals with the van pool services, so I'm hoping somebody from DOT can come and answer that question.
We contract with the 50 TMA, right, to provide the services? Is that correct? Or DOT operates the vans?
We oversee it. First of all, Ron Vicari, Director of Transportation. The 50 Quarter TMA does -- is the manager of it. We oversee it. There's a big effort in getting the group of people together, getting off and running, and also tracking to make sure it stays successful. So we do monitor that. 50 Quarter TMA plays an active role in that.
Okay, I guess I just -- what I was asking though, is you track it, is there some number to that? And if you don't have it, I don't expect you to just create it, but there should be some tracking then, that you're saving multiple trips by, you know, providing the van pool. Again, that's substantive evidence for anybody that would say, well, you know, is this working? What are you putting the money towards? And obviously, DUEs that pay into it are critical to, you know, growing the service over time because of growing population. My point was, Ron, was that we -- I guess I'm suggesting that we should track, at least in some general sense, you know, what the savings are relative to -- because there are air quality benefits that are netted by that, there are, you know, hopefully savings in time, people can use the carpool lane if there are, you know, more than certain number of occupants in those vehicles if they're traveling the freeways. So some additional information that I think is helpful for somebody who says, well, what does CSA 10, what's it do? Offers a van pool. What are the qualitative benefits? Because there are qualitative and quantitative as well, so.
Absolutely. I misunderstood. So we absolutely do track that. We use that in determining whether or not the van pool will be started, but even during the course, we track that. That's how we know the van pool's successful, that's how we know we want to continue with the van pool. If we're not saving a significant amount of trips and that van pool isn't -- doesn't have a group of people that are vested in it, then we would stop that and look to either get more people involved so that we can make sure that it is an efficient system and it is reducing trips.
So can I just ask for the report next year? You do this annually, that then included as a part of that then, number of rides that were provided, and you know, if there's a way to qualitatively determine that, you know, that, you know, because again, we're always looking for ways in addressing other parts of our general plan for offsets for greenhouse gases and so forth. Part of what we're doing here is providing an opportunity for folks to make that choice, but also it has benefits, and so it may help us in other regards. So I guess I would just ask that as a part of that, without getting too caught up in all the statistics, is to have that information available as part of any annual report. So folks that would go online, they could see what, you know, what are the net benefits that are coming out of this in a variety of different matters, so, or reasons, so.
We absolutely will. And just one additional thing, we have different size vans for the number of people. So we pool -- and this, the group of people that participate in this make their daily trips to and from work as part of this van pool, so they're vested group. And we size the van pool according to the number of people that are going to those destinations. And so, but we will definitely include that as part of the report.
Okay. And then just one other thing while you're up here then, it was another part of my point here was, is that I know that, you know, since we last had this report, certainly the Regional Transit District has embarked in a very significant way because of some grant funding and also some initiatives authorized by the Board and working with communities on their neighborhood ride. And so as we look at transit shuttle opportunities, I think we certainly, and I know we do have ongoing discussions with Regional Transit, but talk with them about, you know, what the opportunities might be as the population grows that could support some financial contribution to an effort like that. So I'm just, again, that's being rolled out in existing neighborhoods and communities throughout the county, both unincorporated and incorporated areas. And so I guess I would just suggest that, you know, as part of this, we ought to, you know, make sure we're in close contact with Regional Transit relative to their efforts and how it might coincide with what we're doing here, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. That's all I had. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions before opening the public hearing? Opening the public hearing? I don't have any speaking requests, so close the public hearing.
Okay, and I would move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Please vote. Unanimous vote. Item number 60 is the Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District, Zone 4. Public hearing on the proposed assessment for fiscal year 2018-19. Adopt resolution confirming the assessment diagram and levying assessments.
Good morning. Reza Omogisi, Department of Transportation. The item before you relates to setting assessment rates for the Landscape Maintenance District. On May 22nd, the Board accepted the engineer's report and adopted their resolution of intention to levy assessments on properties for the purpose of maintaining landscape area -- areas. Today is set for a public hearing before the Board adopts the resolution levying assessments for district for fiscal year 2018-19. The Landscape Maintenance District provides funding for the maintenance of roughly 2 million square feet of landscaped areas along medians and road frontage. Exhibit one or attachment one of the Board letter depicts the boundaries of the district. The district consists of 19 non-contiguous areas. The largest area, which is about 90% of the district, is in the Alverda area, and the remaining 18 areas are throughout the county. Assessments for next year are the same as last year. In fact, U2 Prop 218, the assessment rates haven't changed, they have remained unchanged for the past 24 years. The assessment rates for residential properties is set at $42.50 per parcel. For commercial properties, the assessment is set at $66.51 per acre. The revenue generated by the assessments is around $500,000, and the proposed budget for next year is around $966,000. So there's a gap between revenue and the expenditures, and to gap that bridge, the road fund will be contributing about $440,000 to the Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 2018-19. Today, we ask that after the public hearing, you adopt a resolution confirming the assessment diagram and levy assessments for the Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 2018-19. That's a brief overview of the item. I will be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? No? Okay, thank you. I need to open the public hearing. I don't have any requests to speak. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Public hearing is closed. Have a motion?
So will.
We've got a first and a second. Please vote. Okay? Unanimous vote. Next item? Okay, for item 61, you are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. Public hearing to proceed with projects and levy assessments in Zone 13 of the Sacramento County Water Agency for fiscal year 18-19.
Good morning, Carrie. Good morning. My name is Carrie Schmitz. I'm with the Department of Water Resources.
Morning, Carrie.
On May 22nd, your Board approved a resolution of intention to proceed with projects and levy an assessment in Zone 13 of Sacramento County Water Agency. Today, I'm here as a follow-up to that action, and I'm asking the Year Board to adopt the resolution instituting projects and levying assessments in Zone 13 for fiscal year 2018-19. In 1987, the Board approved the formation of Zone 13 in unincorporated Sacramento County. In 1987, the Board approved the formation of Zone 13 in unincorporated Sacramento County. The purpose of the zone is to fund long-range planning studies and services that are related to drainage and water supply. The assessments are levied based on a land-use methodology that was developed in 1995 and have not increased since then. In 2018-19, Zone 13 will fund the programs listed in the engineer's report, which includes the Water Forum Successor Effort and Habitat Management Element, county's compliance with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, county's engagement in Delta-related efforts, and implementation of the National Flood Insurance Program. Today, I'd like to ask that your Board take the following steps: open the public hearing regarding the Zone 13 projects and assessments for 2018-19, consider public testimony, close the public hearing, and adopt the attached resolution instituting projects and levying assessments in Zone 13 for 2018-19.
Thank you. Have a question from Mr. Ntoli.
Yes. Thank you, ma'am chair. Thanks, Carrie. In the attachment that came with the staff report that we had in May, you outlined the proposed budget at that time. A couple of questions that relate to the assessment and proposal here today. On that, it's on page 7 of 18 on the attachment 1. When we talk about the Habitat Mitigation Plan, Lower American River, is that something that is ongoing forever? Or is it something that, from year to year, depending upon what activities are planned? Because I understand the Water Forum Successor Effort, obviously, that's a commitment we've made and continue to sustain our ongoing contribution. But what about the Habitat Mitigation Plan? And is that something that we ever get done with? And can we allocate funds elsewhere or not?
So that was a commitment that was made as part of the Water Forum Agreement. So that agreement ends in 2030, but it is a commitment to that time unless we want to open the Water Forum Agreement and reevaluate.
And so what does it buy for $440,000 a year? What does that, is it ongoing installation of mitigation? Or is it just monitoring of mitigation that's occurred or what?
So the Habitat Management Element actually works on projects in the American River. So they do gravel projects, and they use the money that both the city and the county put into the Habitat Management Element to get grant funding and work with Bureau of Reclamation to fund gravel projects which benefit fish in the Lower American. So that's, it's...
And so the Water Forum then, under its administration, is solely responsible? We just write the check for it? Or is it something that city and county staff come together on a regular basis to determine? You know, and I get, I've been over some of the projects where you've done the gravel beds and, you know, try to increase spawning and so forth and enhance the habitat. But there are certainly in this Board, spent a good deal of time over the last few years talking about other impactful activities to American River, both to the water, but certainly to the adjoining lands and communities and so forth. So is it, who makes the determination about how that money's going to be spent on any given year or over time?
So the Water Forum participants, and there's also a coordinating committee that the city and the county both participate in as well as other funders of the Water Forum effort. So we help make decisions about how the money is spent.
So we being you and Michael?
Right.
Okay. So one other question along those lines then. With the park and water bond measure that's going to be on November ballot, obviously, we don't know what the determination will be with that as it relates to voters' outcome on that. But that has that money for the American River Parkway in it. Obviously, we have a conservancy now. And so I guess I'm curious about the coordination of those activities. And if we could just continue to write the check as a part of an agreement, and it's done some good work. But are there ways to maximize? And again, is the laundry list so long that we have millions and millions of dollars of undone tasks that relate to this particular, you know, mitigation and management and oversight in the American River corridor? Or is at some point in time, we're going to get to it where we will have accomplished it and then it's monitoring? Again, I guess I'm just curious about this because we really haven't had any discussion about this before our Board in any recent times that I recall. And so it might be without spending a lot of time on today.
Would you like to continue this so you can have some meetings?
I don't think that's necessary. Ma'am Chair, I just, you know, it may be that you can come back or with, you know, a memo to our Board and maybe have a presentation. Again, I know we've seen in the past, certainly at Safeco, we've seen some of the activities and work. And again, so I'm not questioning that. I'm just trying to get some sense about if it's going to be forever, we're going to write the check, then, okay, I get that.
I think it's a great question. And we have had Tom Goring of the Water Forum come in and do presentations in the past, but it's been a few years. So it's probably about time for another one. So I can definitely arrange for that.
All right. Very good. If I could, just one other question, ma'am chair, then. It just relates to, on the budget, same page, the fund balance there shows for about $900,000. I know that, you know, certainly there have been some warning signs about, you know, what we're going to be able to do as relates to groundwater management and some of the activities there. Is it proposed that this year, that all that balance is being released and it's all been budgeted in this? And so is, what we're looking at next year is that that fund balance, if these activities draw upon the budget amounts, that we'll be at zero fund balance?
No.
No? Okay.
No. No, there's additional fund balance. We're tracking Zone 13, the fund balance, expenditures and revenues very closely. And we're doing some projections, some five-year projections. And so there's, we're evaluating it right now to kind of make sure that Zone 13 is sustainable long-term. So, you know, we can definitely report back on the results of that evaluation.
All right. And then just lastly then, so as it relates to central groundwater management, and I know that this Board has had some workshops and there can be work at your department working with the groundwater, Central Groundwater Agency. Do you anticipate that during the course of this year, obviously not budgeted, that you will be back to this Board with some discussion about how some of either Zone 13 or other monies might be invested in that overall effort?
We can definitely do that. We do have, we are looking at maybe another report back on the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And as part of that, we could certainly present information about Zone 13.
It's important, I think, to maintain, purpose of discussion for this body, obviously, and those that are interested, obviously. And there is great interest in the central county about that, so, okay.
Sure.
All right. That's all I had. Thanks. I'd move the item. There's no questions.
Open the public hearing. I don't have any requests to speak. Seeing no one moving forward. Okay. Close the public hearing and we'll do a voice vote.
I move the item.
Motion, second. Please vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Noes, abstention. Item passes. Okay. Then I'm going to ask that we skip item 61 and move it to after item 64, since we have members of public here to testify on other items. Go to item 62.
We just took item 61.
Oh, was that 61?
Yeah.
Sorry.
So skip.
All right, then, forget it.
Oh, okay. Okay. So for item 62, this is the...
Dream heat.
This is the Proposed Antelope Property and Business Improvement District, Public Hearing on the Establishment of the District and the Levy of Assessments, Tabulation of Assessment Ballots, and Adopt Resolutions Establishing the District and Authorizing the Levy and Collection of Assessments for Fiscal Year 1819.
My understanding is we were going to continue this to 2 o'clock? Is that correct, Mr. Gill?
No, we got a tab, the tabulation will be at 2. Two-step process.
Thank you.
So I'll explain that in just a minute here. Good morning again, Bob Davison, Division Chief of the County Engineering Division. On May 22nd, the Board adopted a resolution of intention to form the antelope P-bid and also directed staff to mail ballots. This resolution of intention was adopted after receiving petitions by more than 50% of the property owners within the P-bid boundaries. That action authorized staff to mail those ballots. And so after the resolution of intention was adopted, 44 ballots were mailed to owners within the proposed P-bid area. And as of today, as of this point, 29 ballots have been received. Ballots may still be relieved, just, received just to the end of this hearing. And so if anybody brings their ballot to this board chamber, that can certainly be accepted. So with that, there are four actions on this item. And as we just talked about, two of the actions, I'm recommending that your Board adopt in the morning, and then two actions when we return at 2 o'clock. So first, it's recommended that your Board recognize the exempt status of the project pursuant to CEQA. And then also, to designate the Manager of Special Districts, Susan Getz, who's sitting in the audience back there, to conduct the tabulation of the assessment ballots of the returned ballots by affected property owners, and continue this item to 2 PM for final action after that tabulation has occurred. Now, at 2 PM, depending on the results of that tabulation, there will be two more resolutions for your Board's consideration. And with that, to the end of the presentation, I can certainly answer any questions. Also, I just want to point out that the tabulation will take place in a public place as required by law. And that will be the Business Assistant Center, which is located on the first floor of the Old County Administration Building, which is located at 827 Seventh Street. Not after this item, but after, there's a Fulton Avenue renewal item that's also on today's agenda, I think, in two items from now. So after the Fulton Avenue item, which is also a tabulation-type item, the Manager of Special Districts, Susan Getz, will convene in the Business Assistant Center. But she will meet in front of the board chambers for anybody in this chambers that doesn't know where that is. They can certainly get with Susan after the Fulton item and be walked over to the Business Assistant Center. So with that, I recommend that you take action on the first two recommendations on this item.
Any questions? So I would move the items 1 and 2 on this.
I have just a comment.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I just wanted to say that this was something that we started when I was first installed in early 2017. I want to thank my staff, Vance Gerard, who worked really hard on this. I'm so excited that we're to this point. And thanks Civitas and all the businesses and all the staff. You guys, I know, worked hard to make this happen. And we're truly excited about having this P-bid in Antelope. So I'll move approval.
Second. Please vote.
We have two voices.
Oh. There's a ghost.
Unanimous vote. You have to help me out. I can't see. Okay. And that was a unanimous vote. So item 63 is the Carmichael, Florin Road, Fulton Avenue, and Watt Avenue Property and Business Improvement Districts, approve the 2017-18 annual reports and resolutions providing for the levy of assessments for fiscal year 1819.
Good morning again. This item, as your Board knows, there are four active and successful P-bids that are currently operating within the County of Sacramento at this time, Carmichael, Florin Road, Fulton Avenue, and Watt Avenue. And today's item is to approve the annual reports that have been submitted by each of these associations related to these property and business improvement districts. These annual reports are required by state law. And the reports, they summarize the activities and the finances of the, and activities of the P-bids in 2017. And they also include a budget for each of these P-bids for 2018. Also, today's item has three resolutions authorizing the levy of assessments in these P-bids. And the only reason why the Fulton Avenue, resolution authorizing the Fulton Avenue assessments is not on the agenda at this point is because it's part of the next item, which is the renewal of that P-bid. Now, it's my understanding that each of, there are representatives from each of these P-bids that I think wants to address the Board and have submitted their request to speak on this item. But with that, I am recommending that you approve the annual reports for each of these P-bids for 2017-18. And also, to adopt the resolutions authorizing the levy assessments for the Carmichael, the Florin Road, and the Watt Avenue P-bids for fiscal year 2018-2019. And I can answer any questions that you may have, but like I said, the P-bid have represented...
I don't see any questions. Okay. I don't know that it matters. We'll just go on the way it's in the staff report. I have a request from Jennifer McDonald to speak to the Carmichael P-bid.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm pleased to be here today to represent the Carmichael Improvement District. I'm Jennifer McDonald, President of McDonald Association Management Company and the new General Manager for the Carmichael Improvement District. Although we're new to P-bids, we're not new to association management, have decades of experience in government affairs and association management. Along with the support of the Board Supervisors, I work with the very dedicated and capable volunteer leaders who have the diligence to help you create the CID with their tenacious efforts. As a Carmichael resident for more than 30 years, I have a personal interest in the health and vitality of this area. As a few years back, we'd actually considered moving because the area just two blocks from our home at Ferrex and Marconi had become a very crime-ridden and not pleasant place to do business, get gas, or buy food. With private investment, county improvements, and applied attention, that corner now is looking much better and is a very different place than it was just a short time ago. Since last summer, the Carmichael Improvement District has contracted with Paladin Private Security and Gould Maintenance. We see every day their work, their security efforts, their maintenance efforts, their beautification efforts are really shining through. CID has submitted our first TOT grant where we applied for the installation of an automated license plate reader within conjunction with the Sacramento Sheriff's Office, would be at the intersection of Ferrex Boulevard and Manzanita. As I reflected on what to report today, I could not develop a presentation yet that had multiple accomplishments because we are just new. And we look forward to reporting back to you on great things that come in the next few years. What really has struck us all the most is how much time we spend on the transient activity in our business area. We realize this is a part, this is a problem in all parts of the county, but it's our job to work to ensure a better business environment, encourage new business to set up, shop in Carmichael, and be of service to those in the P-bid. But most of our time right now, again, is talking about how to address this visible and persistent vagrancy. I do want to tell you, though, that we appreciate so much the time the Sheriff's Department and other agencies spend in our district, at our meetings, and answering our calls for help. Their service to CID is very commendable. As our district continues to support and engage with business and owner community and envisions and plans for progress and success, we know we will collectively find the answers so we can focus on our mission to enhance the economic vitality of the properties within the district. We so appreciate your support, the business community, and thank you for the opportunity to support the Carmichael community.
Thanks very much, Jennifer. Is someone here from Florin Road to speak?
Good morning, everybody. Very nice to see some smiling faces that I recognize. Got a couple of things that I'd like to point out. First of all, on behalf of the Florin Road Partnership Board of Directors and myself, we'd like to say thank you again for another year of fantastic support with Sacramento County.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I apologize. I'm Corey Duru, Executive Director of Florin Road Partnership.
Thank you.
So we would like to say thank you to Supervisor Kennedy also for consistently placing the appropriate emphasis on helping us find long-lasting positive outcome solutions for our resident homeless population in our district by providing our homeless navigator. So I want to start with a big thank you there. A couple of really fantastic things about Florin Road. When I started there a couple of years ago, I discovered that not only were we the first P-bid in the Sacramento region, but we are also the oldest all-business corridor in the state of California. We were the first to renew successfully for 10 years. And we renewed for another 10 years last year with an overwhelming 75% plus in support. With that said, we will continue to move forward and set the pace for other P-bids around the area and indeed around the country. Upon this impressive pedigree, we continue to set this pace. We have, with our homeless navigator, we connected 53 individuals to mental health services. 32 individuals were sheltered and over 100 individuals were connected to the appropriate documents that they would need to reach services. So we've been really doing some great work in the district. Our Big Belly Solar Trash Compactors, we are one of the only districts in the area who has, we are the only district that has solar compactors. We removed 124,000 gallons of trash out of the district and increased our crew's efficiency by 89%. With that said, we also had over 3,000 calls for private security with Paladin. I have a short video that I prepared because I can go like this, but then it's going to sound like Snoopy, so let's press play. Thank you. Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you. That's my home away from home right there. So looking forward, we are really excited to work on essentially a blank slate on Florin Road. We're welcoming murals, festivals, pop-up marketplace, public arts, green spaces, real estate and development, infill, localized investment into incubator minority businesses, microtransit equitable opportunities for all of the South Sacramento region, such as the opportunities on which we've been working with Congressman Almiiero's office. We have an impressive array of multicultural local specialty businesses, as well as some of the busiest branches of large corporations, such as Wells Fargo, Bank of America, Starbucks, and McDonald's. We send an open invitation at all times to the rest of the Sacramento region to come and check out Florin Road. You might be pleasantly surprised. We are Florin. That is our hashtag campaign, and our new one is Open for Business. So thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Melinda Epler from Fulton Avenue.
Good morning, Chair Peters and members of the board. I am Melinda Epler, Executive Director of the Fulton Avenue Association, and I'm here representing our Board of Directors and members today. Twenty years ago, our Fulton Avenue founders came forth to form a partnership. The destination formerly known as Miracle Mile had become a road less traveled. Understanding it would take years to see progress and success on Fulton Avenue, this partnership developed a roadmap for improvement. Seize the opportunity. We have many, many times over the past two decades projects such as an upgraded waterline, undergrounding of utilities, added lighting, branded monumentation, landscaping, and decorative signage. We were fortunate to have the county's funding sources and leveraging ability to support our tremendous infrastructure needs. Having these projects completed early in our tenure showed our owners and extended neighbors that we mean business. We are forever grateful for the county's leadership and fortitude with respect to these improvements. This land is your land. This land is our land. The difference between private and public property has generated some strife over the years, but having an owner's manual of enforceable guidelines with our special planning area has proven to be an effective tool from an economic standpoint. Because of this added foundation, we are stronger and in a more competitive position to adapt to the modern world of development. Get off my lawn, my bench, my patio, my parking lot, my dumpster. While that tone sounds harsh and sometimes dangerous, a business community cannot afford to have unlawful and unwanted visitors, loiterers, and campers, nor regular trash, debris, and illegally dumped items. Respect the law is a statement foreign to a population we are trying hard to police. Resources available through our organization to assist with garbage cleanup in the public right-of-way and provide for a private patrol to ensure that this is, that safety and order continues to be a high priority. It is a challenge for all of us. We value and support our community. Our district-sponsored events partner with many other community groups and nonprofits to celebrate the love and respect for our country, to enjoy the diverse taste of our food on Fulton, to honor our deep history for the love of automobiles, and to provide our Fulton Avenue universe the joy of the holiday season. Our signature events allow us to share the efforts on the avenue with our business community, neighbors, and generations of loyal customers. We've got your back. Our property and business owners know that when it comes to planning ideas, new signage, landscaping, fencing, and yes, conflict, the partnership between the association and the county will help them get the best possible outcome. This is some of the most underrated and important work that we do. We follow the Yellow Brick Road. From the beginning, the Fulton Avenue Association's goals have been to get as close to Oz as possible with the vision of bringing back that tattered road to Miracle Mile. After seven years in waiting and over 100 days of rough riding, our 2.8 miracle miles were finally paved. Many thanks go out to Tykert Construction and SAC DOT for working together so masterfully. The reaction I hear most about this improvement is wow. The future is bright. The past six months have been spent on our fourth renewal. For the first time in 20 years, it was clear. If we are to continue to support the programs and services we have already implemented, look for more creative ways to solve problems, and keep pace with rising costs, we have to, we had to raise our annual assessment by at least 15%. With some surprise, early outreach to owners about the increase was met with understanding and gratitude. One of the hardest things for people to remember is how Fulton Avenue looked in 1998. Later today, I'm confident that we will be celebrating our fourth five-year renewal. We do so with you by our side humbly. Henry Ford said, "Coming together is a beginning. Staying together is progress, and working together is a success." How far we have come. We couldn't have done it without you, and this is not the end of our journey together. I thank you all. I thank Supervisor Peters. You have been our champion for many years, and your predecessor before you. And we are excited about what we have accomplished, and we are visionary and excited about what's yet to be. I'd like to thank our board for being so dedicated and committed. Many of the board members have been on the board for 20 years. That's a long, long haul. So we appreciate you very much and your support, and we're grateful to be here.
Thank you, Melinda. I think you know that I use Fulton Avenue as the gold standard. Everyone that comes in wanting a P-bid says, "Well, how do we get to look like Fulton Avenue?" So first, you've got to put 20 years in, and then all of the hard work. So we really do appreciate all you do there.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you. Dave Kuhnan from Watt Avenue, 80 Watt. Get the name right. Hi, Dave.
I'm David Kuhnan, President and Chairman of the 80 Watt District, and I wanted to introduce Rebecca Evans, our new Executive Director. And we've dropped off some nice reusable bag, not a single-use bag. It's a reusable bag.
Thank you for that.
And it's got some fun little 80 Watt District gifts in there for each of you. But I want to turn a little time over to her. It won't take long to introduce you to Rebecca.
Thank you so much, Honorable Board. I am thrilled to be at the 80 Watt District as Executive Director. I come from a T-bid in Ventura County, so it's exciting to see the deep change that you do for business. So we have only been in process for about a year, beginning of, excuse me, January of 2016. So we have done a whole lot since then. Our mission and our vision just really aligns with making change in the area. So we want a sense of place for the residents and the businesses that are there. We have a cluster of building suppliers, and you can just build anything you want just coming to the 80 Watt District. I want to turn it back over to Dave because he has some exciting news about what we're doing.
Our future is to put banners on the streets. We just put up our, we just are finalizing our seven LPR cameras that we're going to have put up. We're going to have monument signage. There'll be a new logo, placemaking areas for residents. We've got a mural, and we've got some business promotion lunch-and-learn events. And I am happy to announce that just last Friday, the National Life Sciences Company, which is originated out of Jinan, China, has closed their purchase of a building in our district to invest millions of dollars in biotech industry just in our little district. So you should be proud of that, that that's going to, that's coming to our, it's coming to our little district. And I want to thank Chair Peters and the whole Board of Supervisors for all your support and what you've done for basically all P-bids in this district in making it affordable and easy for us to get this. It is a challenge to get going, but you've done a lot to facilitate making P-bids happen. And I want to thank you. So we look forward to another great year.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, David.
Thanks. Nice to meet you, Rebecca.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. So we have a recommendation in front of us to approve the annual reports and adopt the resolutions for each of the aforementioned P-bids.
Correct, except for three of the P-bids. One of the Fulton resolution will be along with the next item on the agenda.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
Item 64 is the Fulton Avenue Property and Business Improvement District Public Hearing on the Renewal of the District and the Levy of Assessments, Tabulation of Assessment Ballots, and Adopt Resolutions Renewing the District and Authorizing the Levy of Assessments for Fiscal Year 2018-19.
Good morning again. As we had just heard, the Fulton Avenue P-bid has been successful since 1998 in providing its services, and it's here again to be renewed for another five-year term. Procedurally, this is the same process that you go through to form a P-bid, which we just went through with the Antelope P-bid formation. So with that, on May 22nd, the board adopted a resolution of intention to renew the P-bid, and after that resolution of intention was adopted, ballots were mailed to 139 owners. At this point in time, we've received 75 ballots, and with that, I recommend that your board take action on the first two items to recognize the exempt status of the project pursuant to SEQA and designate the manager of special districts to conduct the tabulation and to return at 2:00 PM for the final action. And I'll just point out again that Susan Getz, the manager of special districts, will meet out in front of the board chambers right after this item and walk over to the Business Assistant Center. And just for the record, the tabulation, which by law has to take place in a public place, will happen on the first floor of the 827 Seventh Street Old Administration Building in the Business Assistant Center immediately following this item. And with that, I recommend that you take action on Item 1 and 2, and then we'll return at 2:00 PM for further action.
Okay. Well, I'll move Items 1 and 2 on this.
Second.
We have a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
So Bob will come back at 2:00 and review Items 62 and 64 after the votes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 65 is the County Service Area 1. You're conducting a public hearing on the fiscal year 2018-19 service charges. Confirm written report and adopt resolution setting the charges for fiscal year 2018-19.
Russ Childers from the County Department of Transportation. Morning, Russ. County Service Area 1 provides funding for street and safety lights. It pays for both the maintenance and the electricity to keep the lights on. Once a year, we come to your board to conduct a public hearing and set the following year's rates. On June 19th, you accepted the engineer's report, directed staff to publish notice. We did so twice in Sacramento B. I had one inquiry this year about the CSA1 service charges. I do not have a protest. If you flip very quickly to the service charge table on the second page of your board item, the first three line items, safety light only, street and safety light, and street and light safety, non-residential, those rates were capped by the passage of Proposition 218. They cannot be raised without a ballot procedure. The last four items, the enhanced street and safety light, residential and non-residential, and the decorative street and safety light, residential and non-residential, those are being raised. They have an inflation factor that was included in the program in 2006 when your board adopted modifications to the ordinance. Those are being increased this year based on the CPI at 3.6%. So my recommendations at this point are that you open the public hearing, receive testimony, close the public hearing, and adopt the resolution confirming the written report and establishing the fiscal year 2018-19 CSA1 service charges.
Any questions?
Ron.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, Chair. Thanks, Russ. I did note in the attachments to our staff report that this year, there's no road fund contribution, but there was a time not too long ago that we were upside down or getting very close to it. It actually had gone out to people in the corporate area of the county to seek to change the assessment for safety lights and for street lights, and that failed pretty miserably. And I know we've done some consultant review of that since then. This board's had some conversation. My question is, though, and again, obviously, it's still a fairly lean budget, and I appreciate the work. I want to compliment you and certainly your colleagues for, you know, working with SMUD to the LED changeout. I know there's another bunch of lights coming later this fall, at least according to the report. My question is, is that early on, though, going back probably 20 years or so, we had pretty aggressively addressed, particularly in some of the outline areas outside of your suburban setting, rural areas, to provide safety lights at a number of the rural intersections. And obviously, that's covered under the fixed assessments. But in more recent times, we've kind of put the brakes to that because obviously, we had costs associated with vandalism during the recession, we had energy costs, and then just costs that weren't being covered. I guess my question is, though, is that the additional safety lights that were put in the inventory over the last year, I don't recall that there's been too many rural applications. Are we open to looking at that? Again, recognize, obviously, requires us to take a look at, you know, where power's available and so forth, and our energy charges associated with that. But if recollection serves me correct, we've kind of put the halt to that in recent years. And with a fund balance, with a balanced budget that has some carryover, obviously, and, you know, with the inflation factor built into some of the new additions to the system, I guess my question to you is, is that do we have the ability to look at, again, with the growth in traffic, having come from a meeting last night, and I want to thank the Department of Transportation, was there, community meeting in hood, talking about traffic issues in addition to sewer services potentially in that community, just the number of vehicles using certainly our streets and byways, but certainly in the rural areas, and thinking about not just the delta, but some of the other rural southern portions of the county, and as well as, I'm sure, in northern and eastern part of the county. Do we have the ability to take a look at some applications for some additional safety lights at intersections that are seeing, obviously, increased traffic with growth in population? And so, long question, but I guess I'm curious. My bottom-line question is, do we have the ability to do that? Obviously, your department certainly has taken that under advisement, but I know some of the response has been, we're not, we weren't adding, at least by our own initiative, any, you know, any additional safety lights in recent times.
In the 1980s and 1990s, you had a huge program.
Right.
To go out all over the county and put in safety lights at intersections that.
It's probably saved innumerable, innumerable lives and accidents and such, and made for much safer travel in some of those areas, so.
We have installed a couple in the last couple of years. Alta Mesa at, headed down towards Galt, towards the new Walmart. I can't think of the two intersections.
Twin Cities.
No, not Twin Cities. One of the other ones.
Okay, Cherokee.
But anyway, there's been one or two a year, and they meet the warrants, and we go ahead and put them in where SMUD can provide both the power and the equipment for us. So we will continue to do a limited number of safety lights year to year where we meet the warrants, and I don't think it will break the bank.
Okay.
But I don't think we're going to see a huge project to put in four, five, 600 lights ever again.
When you say meets the warrant, when you say meets the warrants, though, I didn't mean the, but when you say meets the warrants, the warrants being what?
They have to be on a major street at an intersection.
Major street? How do you classify that in a rural area?
Well, in your, in your transportation plan, you do have rural major streets. I can't remember the exact terminology, but there is a list of roadways in there that form the major rural collectors, and we look at the intersections on those streets. Or two nighttime accidents in a year, we'll go in and put in a light.
Okay. So if we have some candidate locations, and that's the only criteria, there's the warrant criteria?
Intersection on a major street or two nighttime accidents in a year. So we can go off the major streets if you've got a location like a right-angle turn.
Right, right. Okay.
Where there's a safety issue that is not related to an intersection. We can go with those locations, too.
Okay. Again, I do regular briefing with you, and I know I just had that yesterday, but with your department. So I have a couple of candidate locations that I'll suggest, and obviously, I know you've been good about taking a look at those, but it seemed to me we had some capacity here, maybe very limited. But again, I appreciate the management of the district, and I just wanted to be sure for the record that we have some opportunity to take a look at some other locations. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I'll move staff report.
Please vote.
We have to conduct a public hearing.
Oh, we have a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anyone wants to speak?
I don't.
No? Close the public hearing. Voted. The answer is?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 66 is the County of Sacramento Community Facilities District Number. Item sixty-six is the County of Sacramento Community Facilities District Number 2016-2, Adopt a Resolution Approving the Issuance of Special Tax Bonds Series 2018, Authorizing the Execution and Delivery of a Master Indenture, a First Supplemental Indenture, a Bond Purchase Agreement, a Continuing Disclosure Certificate, and a Deposit Agreement Approving a Preliminary Official Statement and Waiving Certain Provisions of the Communities Facility District Special Assessment and Financing Program Policies, and Authorizing Certain Other Actions in Connection Therewith.
Quite a title. Good morning, Kristin Yates, County Executive's Office. So today, I'm requesting the Board's approval to issue a series of bonds for the Florin-Vineyard CFD Number 2016-2 in an amount not to exceed $8 million. The district is within the Florin-Vineyard Community Plan area and is generally located along the south of Tioga Woods Drive and Billfish Way, north of Castleman Road, east of the Southern Pacific Railroad tracks, and west of Elk Grove Florin Road. Pursuant to the acquisition agreement approved by the Board in November of 2017, the proceeds from the bonds may be used to fund developer-constructed facilities, which include a neighborhood park, an intersection improvement, which includes a signal at Castleman Road and Elk Grove Florin Road, a sound wall along Elk Grove Florin Wall Road and Castleman Road, and streetscape improvements of the construction of 255 residential homes. The remaining proceeds will be allocated to roadway improvements that will be constructed by the County Department of Transportation. Debt service on the bonds are payable only from special tax assessments on the property owners in the district and are not a general obligation of the county. Bonds will be at a fixed rate with a final maturity of 2048. The developed and undeveloped single-family residential properties will be taxed at a maximum rate between $1,224 and $1,530, depending on the size of the lot, with an escalation factor of 2% per year. The district was appraised at not less than $72.6 million and meets the CFD lien-to-value policy of three to one. Staff is also recommending that the Board waive the CFD financing policy requirement related to the third-party guarantee where a property owner responsible for more than 10% of the annual special tax payment secure a letter of credit in an amount equal to 102% of the maximum special tax. Authorization of the deposit agreement will allow a cash deposit equal to that same value. This is not a rated transaction, and the County Debt Utilization Committee met on July 10th with unanimous approval. If authorized by the Board, the 2018 bonds will be priced during the week of July 30th, and the transaction will close during the week of August 13th. So with that, if you have any questions...
Thank you, any questions for Kristin? Nope?
Okay.
Chair, move approval?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have some off-agenda speakers. Ted Samara? Mr. Samara, we have a two-minute speaking limit. Do you want your group to take fifteen minutes altogether, or what would you like?
Two minutes.
That's why I was offering the fifteen minutes.
I'll take my two minutes and allow my Board or my members to speak as well.
Okay.
And thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing your discretion to have us go last. Good morning, Supervisors.
Good morning, Ted.
And welcome back. I'm the Executive Director of United Public Employees. UPE represents over 3,500 men and women who work for Sacramento County. We are here today to voice our concerns on the current contract negotiations. We have been bargaining up to five months now with the county, and it has become quite evident through the county's negotiators that the county disvalues employees in both the O-5 and O-8 bargaining unit. Our perception was solidified when the Director of Labor Relations stated to the O-5 negotiation team, mind you, that these have the lowest-paid county employees in the bargaining unit, that the county is perfectly fine in not being the best. Sounds like you guys want to be the best to your business partners here, but when it comes to your employees, no, they're not interested. They're not interested in being the best county employees or best-paid county employees. And quite honestly, that explains the county's possession on many of our proposals. And to add insult to injury, the county, and I got this confirmed today by DHA, the county has now taken away the 2.5 differential from our OAs in DHA, which is known as application registration. Hundreds of your lowest county-paid employees took it. Their justification, the counties, is that the contract has expired, and so too does this differential. But I must remind you that this was negotiated in 2006 with language in that the county had the ability to remove in 2013. And in 2013, we didn't have a successor agreement when that contract expired. We did not reach one until January 2014. They didn't take it then. Then they want to come back and say, well, we didn't have a contract extension. And this is the problem. When I met with your county exec, and he hit it right on the nose, there's a communication problem at the table. Your negotiations aren't there to negotiate it. I stated straight to your Director of Labor Relations, we were willing to extend this contract day to day to maintain labor peace. Crickets from him. Now, during the life of these two contracts, the County of Sacramento has restructured on how benefits are processed in DHA, added specialized units in health and human services, and went as far as restructuring its own organizational chart, which established the Public Works and Infrastructure Agency. A new deputy county exec position was created, and numerous departments now report directly to the county executive.
Mr. Samara, you're at three minutes.
All in the guise... Oh, then let me just go off-script here.
Okay.
Value your county employees. We come to the table to compare apples and apples with jobs. No surrounding counties do what your workers do here as part of either restructuring, DHA. The USBRs over in Cubs do way more than the city of Sacramento do. The office assistant's job has evolved to greater than when it was intended to be, and that's across the board. The county comes back and says, you could take an office assistant, take him from DHA and place him over to the Department of Probation. Really? Not without any complex and specialized training. You created specialized units over in DHA, DHHS, many of you champion, such as the homeless program, Black Child Legacy, sex trafficking of minors, fraud unit, and these are just to name a few. It's unfortunate that many of your employees in those lower-paid classifications are eligible for general assistance, welfare. And it's undawned upon your negotiators, but they don't even know what they do. We provide documentation after documentation to them in regards to how their job has evolved. And these workers behind you do it, open-heartedly, to assist the most needy in this county, to provide those services in which you all get credit for. And we ask for them to be compensated fairly. I won't take any much more of your time. I appreciate the two minutes. I'm quite surprised these folks have been four and a half two minutes.
You had five minutes.
The five minutes.
Janine Lopez.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I am here to address the dismal progress of contract negotiations occurring between UPE O-8 bargaining unit and the county. I'm a social worker at CPS, working exclusively with commercial sexually-exploited youth and crossover LGBTQ youth involved in sex trafficking. Today, I was supposed to be at the state Capitol at a press conference in regards to the Rotary Club's championship of combating sex trafficking in Sacramento County, but I thought my time would be better spent here. Our bargaining unit deserves what we're asking for. In 2009, 2010, we gave to this, keep this county afloat, and not only did you float, you've prospered. And we've seen the county executives pay, the number of deputy directors and department director positions increase, the pay of your outside negotiators increase, the cost of living increase, and our workload increase, but our paychecks have not increased. One of the things that we asked for in our negotiations was that those working with special populations, such as sex-trafficked youth, LGBTQ youth, medically fragile youth, African-American families through the Black Child Legacy Initiative, cultural workers, and those doing the jobs of master's-level social workers with a bachelor's degree be compensated for it. For example, I'm one of three social workers in Sacramento County that investigate allegations of sex trafficking among our population. I am one of 21 specialized social workers that work exclusively with that population. I am one of three in Sacramento County that have been trained nationally in regards to working with sex-trafficked youth. Last week, being only the second week of the month, I was the only worker available in Sacramento County to provide support for those families coming forward to CPS needing investigation for sex trafficking. I was the only one for two weeks. I received 83% of those assignments.
Could you wind up your comments, Ms. Wang?
Can I continue?
If you move towards winding it up.
Yeah, I do.
You're over your two minutes.
Okay. We have helped in the criminal prosecutions of exploiters. We have rescued youth from motel rooms and from the streets. We have provided services and safety to those families to avoid them being needed to be brought into care. We deal not only with dependent youth of the family court, but the delinquency court and non-involved youth in your communities. We have been there through the bad times with these youth, and oftentimes, we are the only voice for these youth. And truly, the unsung heroes for those youth are our family service workers and our child development specialists.
Could you wind up your comments, please?
Actually, I'd like to hear the balance of what she has to say.
I just point out, we had a two-minute limit, and she's at three.
I understand, but you've got to remember the Board that wants to hear the totality of what she has to share.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. They are in our trenches with us, but they are not valued at all by their employer, and they make little more than the starting wages as an 18-year-old would at Chick-fil-A, and that is at the top tier of their pay scale in Sacramento County. We are being told by Don Turco and through him, Robert Bonner, that you, the Board of Supervisors, don't care about the work we do and the positive outcomes we have, that you don't care about the long hours, the emotional work of sitting with the youth, having traumatic flashbacks while coming off of heroin or methamphetamine, while sitting in an office or the lobby of the placement services, because we can't have them around younger children because they pose a physical danger to them. We are doing our damnedest to keep them out of facilities like the Children's Receiving Home, where they are equally at risk of commercial sex trafficking due to the location and their own facility limitations. We are not alone in this problem in our community, but through the uniqueness of the work that your social workers, your family service workers, and your child development social specialists are doing, we are making progress in this battle against exploitation of our youth in this county. These are your future constituents. These are the people that will be taking care of you when you are too old to care for yourself. Knowing that Robert Bonner doesn't care about the employees of Sacramento County is not a new thing. We knew that during the prior negotiation cycle when he showed up in a brand-new Jaguar while we were fighting to bring back people from layoffs and giving his negotiation team rides before they had to come in and beg us to allow them to involuntarily transfer social workers to the CPS Court Investigations Unit because of the fact that people were quitting because the work was too hard. His smugness has not been forgotten. Just now, he has Don Turco as his puppet dancing in our negotiations because Robert Bonner is too afraid to face this bargaining unit again. The bargaining unit has voted to strike this county if movement does not occur during our negotiations. Our members are willing and able, and unlike other units or other unions, the Janus ruling does not scare us, which is a tactic that Robert Bonner used the first day back at negotiations after the Supreme Court ruling. Our members believe and made our union what it is, and they know the work we, as their elected Board members and as their negotiators, are doing and that we are working hard because they elected us to do so. And even though the elections have just passed, you, as elected officials, need to know what your constituents are doing for the communities you represent. If you want educated, trained, and a faithful workforce to remain in Sacramento County, you have to be competitive. The state and other counties are heavily recruiting for your staff, even to the point of negotiating wages. The state is individually negotiating wages with employees from Sacramento County. These are going to be your soon-to-be former employees. We will not sit by and have compensation for our members pushed aside because Ann Edwards wanted another deputy director because other directors had more than her. While her employees and our members are struggling to keep a roof over their head and food on the table for their families, and I'm really sorry that I have to be here during a time when actually CPS is quite proud of our former deputy director, Michelle Caellas, for being recommended for the director of DCFAS because she came from where many of us in CPS were. But soon, she may be returning to her roots if we strike, and she may have to work those intake lines and supervise those visits, find those placements, and write those court reports because our members are ready to walk in order to show you what they are worth. Thank you.
Ernestine Stoddard? Ernestine Stoddard, or Stodham?
Thank you for having me. My name's Ernestine Stoddard, and I work at Cubs. And the first thing, this is the first time I've been at the negotiating table, and I was very disappointed in the amount of negotiation that is going on with the county. We had thirty proposals, and they had four. They, the county has also, whenever they came back and they just rejected, they would just reject our proposals without any reason, so we were unable to counter proposal. We were told that we were basically a dime a dozen, that they have a long list of people waiting for our jobs, and that we have no retention issue. And... And we were also told that there was over 200 vacant positions, which the departments are still receiving revenue for, but yet they can't seem to give us any raises. The reason I'm here basically is that one of the proposals that we have is to a compensation study and also asking for equity raises, which we haven't had in a long time. UBA SARs are a revenue-generated department. We have over forty members there. We handle bankruptcies, collections, gift tracing, accounts receivable, auditing, refunds, correcting billings, adjustments, understanding regulations of state and local regs for water, trash, drainage, sewage, and also we handle for residential and commercial. We also handle the sales for deeds, foreclosures, and we are also in contact with the Sister's Office, D R and R, water quality, waste management, and sewer department, entitled companies, property managers, mobile home parks. When we receive a call from a customer, we don't know what they want, and they have... We cover so much, and we are only getting paid... We are not getting paid what we should be getting paid. SMUD pays their members $27 an hour to start. We get paid $16 to start, and the OAs have morphed into something more. So UBSRs were basically office assistants, but we have morphed into such, much greater, and that's why we're asking for the compensation study because there's so much that we do that we don't get credit for. Right now, we have four notaries that are doing jobs, they are notarizing documents, and it is not in their specs, and we asked for 5% for the people that do notary, and that was rejected because we were told that was their job.
Okay, Ms. Stodham, excuse me. Mr. Entoli has a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't let you finish, but I wanted to ask you, in your comments, you said this obviously has been your first time at the table, but you said that your takeaway or was said that there are folks waiting and that you and folks that work in those positions are a dime a dozen? Is that, is that a quote?
What he said was that there was no retention problem and that he has over 1,000 people waiting for our positions.
Okay.
That's what he actually said.
That's okay.
That's what he said. He didn't say dime a dozen.
Yeah, I get the essence of what you were saying. I just wanted to be, again, I took what you said literally. I wanted to be sure about it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe I mispronounced it on Lincoln Oaks Drive? Michael Collins? Okay. Then Terrence, no last name.
Thank you, Board, for having me. I represent the family service workers. And just like Janine was saying, we have not received the equity for almost as long as I've been here, and that's been over 18 years. The job that we do as family service workers is critical to this department. We transport almost every child in this county, within the department, ranging from medical, which includes dental, all that stuff, emergencies, which includes if the kid gets a twisted arm or a cut on their arm, we transport. We transport kids to court, to anything. I mean, anything and everything that the department puts a referral in and asks for us to transport. We do that. We do supervised visits with the parents. The parents come, we make the arrangements, we do the scheduling and we do the visits. We see parents once or twice a week, every week. We carry in the neighborhood 10 to 12, well, they don't call them, but there are cases because there are referrals and stuff like that, and we do that on a weekly basis. That's a minimum of 40 to 65 cases that we're doing a month each on an average. Nobody can say, maybe except for your negotiating team, that we don't do anything, that we're babysitters. I'll tell you what, if you or management or something like that was to go and try to do all the stuff that we do, you'd be going, there is something wrong with this situation. We need to make a change. If you guys were to say, okay, we don't need workers, we're going to just get rid of that process, guess what? You'd have a mass exit, because the social workers would not be able to step up to that plate and do all that. It's too much. And the only thing we ask for is to be compensated. That's what we're asking for. We're not asking for pie in the sky or something like that. We're asking the Board to go back, to communicate with the negotiator and say, hey, guys, step up to the plate. That's what we're asking for, because we've already proven that we are out there doing the work. That's one thing you can guarantee. We also have a process which we do baby patrol.
Could you wind up your comments, Mr. or Terrence?
Baby patrol is, thank you, baby patrol is our after-hours on-call piece. Half the county shut down after 5:00 or whatever. We're still out there going, meeting law enforcement, meeting with the social workers that enter the scene and transporting children to the hospital or to placement or to CPSU to be held there.
Please wind up your comments, Terrence.
So we are, again, just throwing out there kind of what we do, you know? If you were to look at a case plan, we do almost half the social work caseload, but only we do it physically, and that's what we do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Reeve?
Hi, Members of the Board. Thank you for giving me some time. My name is Richard Reeve and I'm a 23-year employee with the Assessor's Office, and I'm here to represent the 005 bargaining unit, and I'm also a member of the Board of Directors. I'm sure you've heard the news lately about, in fact, one just came out a couple days ago, inflation. Inflation has now erased all wage gains in the United States. And more news, Sacramento County is among the least affordable places to live in the nation right now. And, you know, nobody can really afford an apartment in this town on minimum wage. And that's exactly what Labor Relations is asking many of our members to compete with that are making $16 to $17 an hour right now. As you know, the California minimum wage is rising. And by the end of this contract, they're not going to be too far off of that minimum wage. And right now, quite a few of our members qualify for SNAP, and that shouldn't be acceptable to this Board. We, you know, to mirror what Janine said, we're finding the same frustrations in our negotiations with Labor Relations. It comes off as they don't care. We've presented an MIT study and a few other studies about the actual living wage that you need to make in Sacramento County as support for our wage increases, and we get crickets. We get nothing. We get nothing but no. And we're tired of sitting here every meeting with Labor Relations not having any answers to our wage increases, our wage, our COLAs, our equity increases. And, you know, we took a huge hit in the last recession, and we have 227 positions that are not filled right now. Where is that money going? Well, part of our negotiations, one of the members negotiating for the county, she got a deputy director position created for her. I think that's where that money's going. It's going to management, it's not going to the workers. And so we hope that you encourage Mr. Gill and Mr. Bonner to actually negotiate in good faith, because so far, it hasn't been. And we are fed up, and that's why we took a vote to authorize a strike. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. James Starr?
Good morning, Members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is James Starr. I'm a member of the UPE 008 bargaining team and a 33-year employee of the Department of Human Assistance. It seems to be news to your negotiators that there are 2,000 fewer county employees than there were prior to the Great Recession a decade ago, and that this reduced workforce is struggling not only with much greater workload, but also with the radical changes in business practices and workflows created by county managers in an effort to make the workers do more with less. It would be hard to find a place in the county where the nature of the work has changed more than in DHA, my department. With the advent of the service center model, a tremendous amount of adjustment has been required of the workers, and the level of personnel turbulence is very high, which shouldn't surprise anyone, as it takes workers who are amazingly flexible, adaptable and committed to want to stay on and deal with the chaos that has been wished on them. The work has evolved even since our last contracts were signed in 2015 to be far more demanding and complex. UPE has proposals on the table today to increase the rate of pay for groups of your employees whose pay is significantly below the median among similar workers in the comparison jurisdictions, and also to increase compensation for other employees with newly expanded duties for which they are undercompensated. This is vital. Your workers look to you for fairness, and they've been waiting for fairness through five months of negotiations, but they won't wait forever. We've gone out on strike before when we had to. Please don't make us have to.
Thanks, James. Thank you, Mr. Starr. Our next speaker is Andrea Tulis. Not sure if I pronounced that last name correctly.
That's right. Good morning.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have an issue, and I'm not from here. However, Mr. Serna, Mr. Gill, I've addressed with the city police what's been going on with my children in the public school district, and I'm not getting a response. I've contacted Child Protective Services over 30 times. I actually have the worker sitting here, and I was told I had to wait for a supervisor to come back from vacation, only for them to play and tell me that this has now turned around on me. I have my daughter sitting here, and she's afraid to go home. I have three different entities that have called my daughter the next school shooter because she was a part of a homicide at 5:00. I have went all through the Capitol Building. I know we all said the pledge of allegiance for a reason, and I've had no help with her. I can speak of 10 workers that I've called. The only thing on my dossier, as they say, is me being a foster parent here in Sacramento and in San Francisco and working for the Department of Motor Vehicles 12 years now. And the only thing they do is leave my baby to suffer. She's still suffering today, per our U.S. Senator Kamala Harris. This should be handled at city-state level. The police will not come out. She's been missing 16 days this school year. I pulled her. Then, on top of that, I wrote into the FBI and I wrote a formal letter for all eight children in the Toma's. No one's paying attention to what is going on. Now, I have a damaged child, and per the human learning consultant, this has retarded the development and growth of her brain and been very traumatic to her. So when I'm calling the sheriffs and they're hanging up on me, or the California Department of Education website tells me to contact Child Protective Services, Michelle Casalis' number is 875-0123. I've left this woman 10 messages. I called Mr. Alcolino, who's here now, only for Sonia Gomez to say, well, I must make contact with the child. Why were my child afraid? Because the Toma's had no diversity. They did not have to do that and bring that back up into the child's life. Child has ADHD. Lawsuit comes out Friday. We have kindergartners that have been suspended 60 times and boys and girls pushed out due to being criminalized for behaviors associated with ADHD. The child has no disabilities, but she has no protection or help because the Toma's failed to adequately refer her over to the regional center. CPS has basically wanted me to get off their back, I guess. Susan Anderson or Buzz.
Ms. Tulis? I'm wondering if the county executive could, I don't think we can help you with the city police, because they don't work for us.
No, what I'm saying is, I've climbed up the chain of command to Cal OES, because my daughter's in distress and no one has helped her. I have paperwork saying she's been sexually harassed, and I have now a charge because they've had her in a self-contained class when she has no disabilities, but no one will help?
Well, I think someone here maybe could sort out the...
Mr. Serna, I reached out to your office in October of last year. I've never gotten a response. Child abuse is okay within the school district?
Well, you're here today, and so is our CEO. What I would suggest is we, I don't know if there's more speakers?
No.
Okay. What I suggest is let the gavel come down, so we can break for, we do have more speakers, it appears.
No, I don't have any more speaker sheets.
Once the hearing is done, gavel comes down, I suggest you remain here, and I think what the chair was going to suggest is that you get Mr. Gill's card, so that we can close the loop on this.
Okay. Because I did start with Howard Chan, the city, and Anthony Ashby.
Someone will help you sort out who you should be talking to. It's confusing to hear it from here. Okay. Is there another speaker?
Yes.
Okay.
If you could give your form to the clerk when you're finished.
Yes. I turned it in earlier to the lady that just went over there.
Oh, I'm sorry, it didn't get to me.
My name is Lori Vang. Okay. I'm a family service worker. Ladies and gentlemen, as an FSW, starting off at $15.41 is an embarrassment. A bigger embarrassment is that I have to justify why I want and need a raise for the hard work that I do. I am embarrassed to tell my friends and family what I make as an FSW, which is sad, because I have so much pride in working for the CPS department. The county should be embarrassed for the pay rate to give FSWs. I should not have to justify why I want and need a raise for the hard work that I do. As an FSW, I am underpaid and underappreciated. We work with social workers, and there is a huge pay in the gap. There's a huge gap in the pay. That is unfair to FSWs. As FSWs, we work hand-in-hand with social workers. FSWs are the muscles to the department. We do a little bit of everything. We have the most contacts with children, parents and care providers, day in and day out. We do visits, supervised and observed. We do transports, long transports all over California. We do flights, we do PCs, we do the long waits in emergency rooms. The list goes on. As an FSW, we are not just transporter. We are in charge of these children. That is a huge responsibility, a responsibility that I do not take lightly. These children are in elk here. These children have wide range of background. We deal with children that have behavior problems. We deal with seasick children, children with special needs and disability. We deal with children that have been emotionally, physically abused or neglected, children that have psychological problems. Furthermore, we deal with the parents, the parents that are angry and hostile. We deal with these parents day in and day out. As FSWs, we are exposed to all sorts of risks and dangerous situations, children with violent behaviors, parents with violent behaviors. Once again, FSWs are muscles to the department. Our chronos are so valuable, because we have the most contacts with the children and the parents. I want to make it clear that I am proud to be an FSW. I'm just embarrassed about the pay. The pay does not match the job description. I'm here to let the county know that I believe in the job that I do. I believe that I can make a difference in the children's lives and even the parents' lives. I believe in my job and the contributions that I bring to the department. I love my job and I love helping people. I ask that the county respect me as an FSW and give all FSW respects for the job that we do. And I ask the county to give us the pay raise that should be a given. I should not have to justify why I want and need a pay raise for the hard work that I do. I would like to disclose dangerous situations that I have experienced personally while working for the county. One time was a placement in San Jose. The child was autistic and needed two FSWs to transport to a new care provider. En route to destination, the child undone his seatbelt and lashed onto my ear. The FSW that was driving had to pull over. Another incident...
Could you please wind up your comments?
Okay. Another incident, the child required two FSWs to transport back to the child-receiving home. The child was very combative, threatening to hit us. He was throwing punches and kicks. He was also spinning and tried to break the window. I sat in the back in the car with this child and tried to calm him down. I was able to calm him down. When we got to the child-receiving home, he took out a pocket knife and he wrapped a chain in his fist. This is just to see, this is just to show that as FSWs, we are exposed to all sorts of risks and dangerous situations. I ask again that the county show respect for family service workers. We deserve a pay raise. Thank you.
Thank you. Kazi Bauer? Just had a, Kazi, I may have mispronounced it, sorry, Kazi Bauer? This is the last speaker card that I have. If anyone else wants, please get it in.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Kazi Bauer. I'm a family service worker with Sacramento County CPS, and I've been in this position for a little over two years now. And as many of my coworkers have pointed out, it is important work that we do, and they've kind of touched on the types of things that we do day-to-day. One of the things that I believe often gets overlooked is the tremendous risk in our job. We have, it's kind of a running joke that we're glorified babysitters or glorified chauffeurs for the children in the foster care system. But the children are not the only people that pose a risk in our work each day. Our parents do as well, and so does the general public as we go out into communities to do protective custody calls. And I personally have numerous friends and family that work for our local law enforcement and Sacramento Police Department, and on many occasions... for our local law enforcement and Sacramento Police Department. And on many occasions, I've had the officers say to me personally, and I know to other coworkers of mine, that they would never do the job that we do without carrying a weapon on them. And I know that's their background and their training, but it just goes to show that the level of risk that we face each day could warrant that, that level of protection, and they, they see it as they interact with us each, each day. And so, I did just wanna mention that there, there is more to our job than just supervising visits and dealing with the children in our county, that there is an unknown level of risk each day that we go out and interact with the public, as they don't always have positive opinions of our department. And anybody that's had any history with CPS is well aware of what our fleet of vehicles looks like and will oftentimes seek us out to negatively interact with us out in the field. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. I have no other speakers signed up. We're in recess until two o'clock. Oh, I'm sorry, Phil, I was--
Yeah, can I--
Mr. Serna has a comment.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, before we, before we break, I know that we're, and I know you know, members of UP, that we can't take action on an item that's not on the agenda. This is obviously a labor issue, but I do have a question I wanted to ask in public of our CEO before we do break, and that is this. We've heard, obviously, the testimony today. We've, I think, all received dozens of emails explaining the concern that was, again, reiterated this morning. If it's the will of the board to consider taking deliberative action relative to the request here, how swift can we do that?
I do not have the date and, next negotiation date, whatever date we agree with UP, we can convey the message back, and--
Okay, I, I would just like to, I'd like to be on, I would just like to be on record saying that I think the sooner the better.
I think what I'm trying to say is, that is the intent behind it. You give us direction, we'll be right back at the table.
Thank you, Ms. Anatoly.
Yeah, just to that, we actually, again, we have closed session. We're going to recess. We're going to a closed session. We get a labor update. We have the ability to give direction as soon as this afternoon to, or actually this morning, to our negotiators relative to any of the things we heard here today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? No. Now the meeting is in recess. I'd like to call back to order the July seventeenth meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Supervisors Frost--
Here.
Kennedy--
Here.
Anatoly, Serna--
Here.
Peters--
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, so, we are going to go back to items sixty-two and sixty-four. This is the proposed antelope property and business improvement district.
Good afternoon. The tabulation has occurred for this item, and I'm happy to report that we have a successful outcome for the antelope P-bid.
Great.
So, with that, I'll, I'm gonna recommend that you adopt the resolution establishing the antelope property and business improvement district, but I'm also gonna read into the results, it's, to fill in the blanks of the resolution. So, section three of the resolution will read that at the close of the tabulation, the board had received twenty-nine assessment ballots totaling seventy-six point nine percent of the total assessment, assessment to be levied, of which sixty-two point two percent was in favor of the assessment, and thirty-seven point eight percent was in opposition. And that's the only part I needed to read in there. So with that, I recommend that you adopt that resolution, and also the resolution authorizing the levy of assessments for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen.
Okay, any questions? No? I'll second that motion. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, number sixty-three.
And then, item sixty-four is regarding the Fulton Avenue Property and Business Improvement District on the renewal of the district and levy of assessments.
And I'm happy to report that we have a positive outcome on that, that ballot tabulation as well. In fact, one of the best ever, the highest ever for a renewal of the Fulton District.
Good for you guys.
The initial formation or the renewal, so, so that was really positive. So, again, I will read into section three of the resolution that, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received seventy-seven assessment ballots totaling sixty-two point nine percent of the total assessment to be levied, of which eighty-one point six percent was in favor of the assessment, and eighteen point four percent was in opposition.
Wow, that's a lot of work on the part of the board and director, executive director. Good for you.
So with that, I recommend that you adopt the resolution renewing the Fulton Avenue P-bid, and also adopt the resolution authorizing the levy of assessments for fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
Jason, I'll make the motion on items three and four.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Congratulations. Go forth and conduct business.
Okay, item sixty-seven is the Grocery Outlet PCN ABC License Hearing to determine whether public convenience would be served by issuance of a type twenty liquor license to Grocery Outlet Incorporated, located at eight-eight-three-five Greenback Lane in the Orangevale community.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Leanne Moffett, your planning director, here to give a short presentation. The site is a grocery outlet at eighty-eight-three-five Greenback Lane in the Orangevale community. The item before you is a request. Ultimately, the state ABC will issue the liquor license, but the finding before the board is whether public inconvenience and necessity would be served by issuance of a type twenty liquor license. Here's an aerial of the location. The next graphic shows the site and relationship to other liquor licenses in the surrounding area, including a one-mile buffer, or one-mile area radius, sorry. The project highlights is this is a request for beer and wine license, type twenty. The need for the PCN is triggered because it is in a high crime area. It is actually not in an over-concentrated area. The census tract allows for three liquor licenses, and the issuance of this license would bring the total to three. Within one-mile radius on the prior map, there are eleven establishments with current liquor licenses. Only one is a type twenty license, and the, and the all ten are type twenty-one licenses. The recommendations before you are to approve the finding of public convenience and necessity. The Orangevale CPAC recommends approval on a six-to-zero vote. There are conditions, as issued by the sheriff's letter, that is in attachment two of your report. It includes that the sale of alcohol is limited to the hours of six a.m. and ten p.m. No single sales of beer specifies the amount of shelf and cooler space. And then, we also put conditions on the business license, such as related to the cameras and the other security measures. Those will go on the county business license in the future. So, the sheriff's department, as is their standard language, is willing to withdraw opposition if concurrence by the applicant with their conditions. We do have an applicant representative, Katie Shart, here. She's here to answer questions. She does not have a separate presentation.
Okay, Ms. Frost?
I have a question relating to the single sales of beer. I guess the, the prior licensee in that location was able to sell single sales because they had an older license that was grandfathered in. Is that correct?
I do know that the older licenses did not have the single sales restrictions, so I believe that to be true. And starting in the early to mid-two thousands, the board sort of developed the current set of conditions that we've been asking ABC to apply, which includes the no single sales. So, the newer licenses do have that restriction, and the older ones don't.
Okay, and I wanted to bring this up because this is something that's been emerging over the last couple of years, these craft beer, single-serving of craft, single bottle servings of craft beer, which is, it's not inexpensive, and there are a lot of small breweries that are coming, popping up all over our region, small businesses selling craft beers, and it's become very popular. In fact, some people refer to this as the beer revolution. These are the connoisseurs of beer, and what they like to do is they like to go buy a single bottle of craft beer, or all different kinds, in single bottles, and then they try those bottles to determine which ones they like. They don't drink it. It's not like, I guess, Mickey's or the forty-ounce beers where people buy it to go get drunk. It's different. It's connoisseurs of beer. And in this area where this grocery outlet is going in, and I'm not bringing this up to hold up this hearing, I'm bringing this up as a request for information on this, for my, I'm interested in this, because there are several, multiple other businesses in the nearby region around this store who are selling single-serving craft beers. And it doesn't seem fair, when someone new comes in, or when a smaller, newer business comes in, they can't compete on the same level as other businesses that are already selling that same thing. It limits opportunity for small businesses. And in, and, and I think, to my, based on what my constituents are telling me, this is like, times are changing, maybe? I don't know. So, I was just wondering if I, what I'd like to do is request that we, we look at this. I know there's trepidation around this single-serving beers in certain situations that wouldn't be conducive to public, the well-being of the public, but I would like to look into this and find out if there's a way to separate out, or identify a craft beer as different, and if there's a way that we can make that more equitable for new, newer, smaller businesses who are trying to compete in the same market for the same thing. And I just also want to say that my constituents are really excited about the possibility of single, being able to go and buy a single craft beer in a store, because they cost seven or eight dollars. They're not cheap, and to have to buy it in a package with several of them, and you don't even know if you're gonna like it, it's no fun. You know, they'll go to another store to get it. So, I was wondering if we could look into that over time and, and report back on what your thoughts, what you found out. I know there are other jurisdictions like Lincoln and Rockland, I think, are selling, they, they've, there's, they have legalized single servings on craft beers, and they have specific parameters on how they do that. So, and I'm supportive of this item today. I just wanted to bring that up so that we could be looking for that in the future.
Okay, so, you're asking that, are you going to make a motion to approve this application?
I will.
And then you want more information on the--
No, I move approval on this application today, and then I would like to come back with more information and pursue what our opportunities are to support smaller businesses that are emerging with this new wonderful revol, beer revolution.
I will second vote.
Yeah. Okay. Any further questions? Please vote.
Okay, item sixty-eight, zoning code amendments related to supportive living uses resolution of initiation, request to adopt a resolution of initiation to initiate amendments to the zoning code of Sacramento County related to residential and group living uses.
I have a presentation. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Peters and board members. I'm Jessica Brandt with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. I am in front of you today to request approval to initiate amendments to the Sacramento County zoning code related to supportive housing uses. Supportive living uses is a term that has been adopted by staff to serve as a neutral umbrella category for a variety of housing types that includes some level of service or support. This includes boarding houses, residential care homes, and single-family dwellings, where individuals are not residing together in a single household or family, as defined under dwelling unit. The last category usually takes the form of halfway homes, sober living homes, and other informal group living arrangements. With adoption of the Development Code Package in two thousand fifteen, a number of new provisions were implemented related to such supportive living uses, including development of a dwelling unit definition that described what is considered a single household, establishment of a minor use permit requirement for conversion of single-family residences to five bedrooms or more, and a requirement for single-family dwellings that no longer operated as a single household to obtain a certificate of nonconforming use. All of these amendments were included in an effort to address supportive living uses that were having negative impacts on surrounding neighborhoods. Just as a note at the bottom here, we are initiating amendments regarding this subject at the board level because of the substantive nature of the topic and implications on the regulatory changes. We have a general idea of where we would like to go with these amendments, but we wanted to give the board the opportunity to give us direction on particular topics you would like to see addressed as our effort. After three years of working with the revised code sections, staff has determined that amendments to a number of areas would more effectively and efficiently categorize and regulate supportive living uses in residential areas. This assessment comes from three main causes. First, development of new types of supportive living arrangements. For example, congregate living health facility, or CLIFs, are a new hybrid convalescent hospital residential use, where care provided is not as intense as that provided in general acute care hospitals, but is more intense than what the code currently allows for in a residential care home. Supporting living uses generally continue to evolve and blur the lines between our existing categories. Second, changes continue to happen at the state and federal level related to supportive living arrangements. Two leading examples of these changes include potential licensing requirements for sober living homes, and the inclusion of chronic alcoholism as a recognized disability under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Finally, staff has experienced a number of issues with enforcing the current regulations. For example, here, the requirement to obtain a minor use permit for conversion of single-family residences to five bedrooms or more does not appear to have had a curtailing effect on illegal conversions to boarding homes, which was the intent of the requirement. As stated earlier, staff has a general idea where amendments would be helpful, as outlined in this slide. First, additions to the zoning code, which could include a category for recovery residences, should the state begin licensing sober living homes, development of a general small care home category to cover supportive living arrangements that are not generally licensed by the state, such as halfway homes, potentially sober living homes if licensing through the state doesn't come through, and others that do not fit neatly into another category, and either adding a skilled nursing and residential settings category, or expanding the existing residential care home category to include such services. Second, expansions of existing provisions, which would include allowing boarding houses, which are also known as room and boards, in all residential zones with a use permit. Currently, they're not allowed in our single-family residential zones at all, and with robust use standards. And then, again, as stated earlier, clarifying the residential care home category, designating it for the range of care homes that are licensed by the state only, such as senior living, adults with disabilities. Finally, as discussed, removal of code requirements, such as the minor use permit requirement for fifth-bedroom conversions, and the current certificate of nonconforming use requirement for nonconforming dwellings. In conclusion, staff is requesting that the board adopt a resolution of intention to initiate amendments to the zoning code of Sacramento County related to residential and group living uses, or supportive living uses, as I've been using. Staff is also requesting that the board provide any guidance on direction as we begin amendment development. It is anticipated that development of draft-proposed amendments will include outreach to interested housing and human services policy groups, as well as to our CPACs. Staff anticipates that a set of amendments will come back before the Planning Commission and Board for consideration in early two thousand nineteen. That concludes-- That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, I think, Jessie, certainly in the staff report, you know, covered some of the direction they want to head in. I guess, recollection serves me correctly, though, we had quite a conversation about this going back two or three years ago, this board. There were some examples that may have been addressed through, either through the efforts of the planning department, or code enforcement, or others, that were, I think, some of the poster examples for what was going sideways in a number of neighborhoods throughout the unincorporated area. Certainly, I know that, LeAnn actually attended with me probably four years ago or more now, community meeting in Rosemont, where we had a couple of different situations, and it became very difficult. There were law enforcement issues associated with it, but certainly conversions that may have even had building permits that allowed for that. I think that's how we got to at least some of the conclusion, that maybe having some additional permitting for a greater number than four might be one way to address it. It sounds like that hasn't been effective, at least to what it was intended to maybe stem as it relates to conversion to homes that would have multiple numbers of folks that weren't permitted in one way or the other. I guess, I'm curious, though, that by adding the additional definitions and/or at least the notations about care homes and recovery residents and so forth and so on, what is it that you intend to have behind that? Because the point that we, that we talked about a few years ago was, none of these facilities weren't licensed. They, you know, there wasn't any licensure, so, that was required relative to the, to state, may have been a business license that was obtained or not. And yet, again, if memory serves me correct, we had one that had like 26 or 27 in different, you know, places where people to actually stay overnight, I guess, and maybe bunk beds and so forth. We saw some of the pictures of that particular residence, so that'd probably be the anomaly versus, or the exception versus the rule. So I guess what my question is, is so, what is it that, that behind these, you talk about the law, and I know that's been part of the frustration, certainly Chris has sat with us through many years here off and on about discussions about, you know, what ADA or certain definitions of, under the law, either provide this board via some ability to regulate from a land use standpoint or not. So I guess at the end of the day, Jessica or LeAnn, what is it that you're going to bring back to us that by just adding these categories, what, you're going to have a definition that says this is what this constitutes, you're allowed up to six, or nine, or 10, or 12, or requires a use permit, or? So at least what are you going to start out with? Obviously, that's an iteration that will, you know, again, as it evolves through the hearing process and public review process, may end up with something very different. But what is it the planning staff, and I know you're seeking some direction today, so I wanted to kind of, before I jumped in too deeply, get an idea of what you're looking to do beyond what's in the staff report.
I do think that staff is looking more to the, the use standards as the means to bring a little bit of structure to a lot of these categories. What we found was that, for instance, the residential care home category, we don't really have a robust set of standards that they have to follow. And so, once one, once one is categorized there, they say they have six people, they go on their merry way, and there's really no way to kind of, you know, come back and say, hey, you're not following our, our use standards, you know, you're out of compliance with noise, or parking vehicles, you know, safety issues and the like. So it seems like, rather than going with more of those development standards, like the fifth bedroom, to track more towards what's actually going on. And then, the categories themselves, either expanding what falls under the categories, or expanding the number of categories, we're hoping that we're, we get away from that sort of catch-all, it's a non-conforming dwelling, and so we just have a very limited amount that we can do about it. Because it's, hey, it's always been there, and we just have to kind of let them keep moving. So that's sort of the direction, is going, delving more into those use standards.
So this is directed, again, where state law expressly provides for, you know, six or under, that this is for, for, I guess, more than six, right?
We, we would have to allow six and under, but that doesn't mean we can't have use standards for those sorts of uses.
We can't, we actually can't. And so state licensing, you know, you just, you can't have discretion and tell them they can't be there.
Right, right.
But you can have standards that, that they have to meet as a complement then to...
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I can work with Jessica on those as they get developed, but yeah.
Well, again, I guess helpful, I, you know, and it might go at least part of the way towards, I think, addressing some of the neighborhood and community issues that we see over time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then you, I, you said this, but you, you know, you said it may take six months. I think if you got to the CPACs, you may get quite an earful, so it might be a little longer, six months.
Oh, no doubt, yeah.
Okay, thanks. So.
Other questions? Okay, I want to say, you know, I agree with John, you're probably need more time than that, but I think the way this issue is described in the staff report is very dry, and not easy to understand, and just very clinical, and I think you need to use some more real-life examples, at least in a staff report that, that goes out to the various bodies that will be looking at it. Because, and there's so many acronyms, the NCS, and the MUP, and the CPACs, and the PER, and the, you know, that's also not very reader-friendly. So also, I'd recommend a, not a graph, but a chart of some kind that has each of these different categories in it, and what that means. How big the house is, how many bedrooms, how many people can live in it, can more than one person per bedroom, you know, I, just all those things that people are going to ask. Yeah.
Good thoughts.
We've had some real knock-down dragouts here about that. And I know we have to be careful about how families live, and particularly with a lot of the immigrant families who have larger families. So, okay, so this was really an initiation to start this process. And you'll be back at a time to be determined.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So you want us to adopt a resolution of intention?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, I'll second it. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, and good luck.
Item 69, appointments from your own ranks to the regional water authority.
So would any, I currently am on the regional water authority. Would anyone else like to be on the regional water authority? No one will look at me. Okay. So I'll say.
Okay.
Do we, you need us to vote on it?
Please.
You're doing a great job.
We appoint Susan Peters as our continuing member.
My middle name is Carrie.
Carrie Schmitz being the alternate.
So please vote.
Next is appointments from your own ranks to the first five Sacramento commission.
Mr. Stern is the member, and Mr. Kennedy is the alternate. You two, both of you happy with that arrangement?
Yep.
Anyone else?
Okay.
So I'll move approval.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, and now we have our nominations. Item 71, you are continuing to August 7th, the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Cemetery Advisory Commission, Consumnis Area Community Planning Advisory Council, the County Service Area 4B Slough House-Wilton Consumnis, County Service Area 4C Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Human Services Coordinating Council, Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, Maternal, Child, and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, the Paratransit Incorporated, Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, Adult and Aging Commission.
Chief recommends Susan L. Takahashi, and Teresa Ogun, and Lynn Humphries, and continue the remainder to August 21st.
I also had a note that they wanted you to waive the process.
Oh, yes, sorry, I see that there. So, please vote.
Children's Coalition.
Chief recommends continuing to July 24th.
Disability Advisory Commission.
Continue to August 7th.
Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council.
I would nominate and ask the process be waived to appoint Ted Walter. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. In-home supportive services advisory committee.
I want to nominate incumbent Kimberly Lathrop for the consumer seat, and continue the remainder to July 24th.
Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Continue to July 24th.
Sacramento County Youth Commission.
District 5.
Yes, we would move that the, we appoint, waive process, and appoint Arjen Claire.
Second, please vote.
Veterans Advisory Commission Supervisor Peters.
Continue to August 21st.
Mr. Natoli?
Yes, I continue mine to August the 7th. I've done most of my interviews, I have one left.
Okay. And then we have the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council Supervisor Kennedy.
Reappoint Bill Thompson and waive process.
Okay.
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. And Supervisor Natoli?
Nominate Bart Bear, incumbent.
And that concludes your nominations. Where, do you guys have a note on here where we're continuing this to, the remainder?
Hold this question.
I didn't understand what you said.
Where, how far are we continuing out the remainder?
Remainder four.
Remainder of what?
The remainder of the nomination.
The remainder of the nominations.
Oh, okay. That's, that's all I had in my binder that we went through.
Okay, let's just continue.
August 24th.
Let's do that. 21st, you mean?
21st.
Okay.
So anything that we didn't address, we're continuing to August 21st?
To August 20, yeah, 21st.
Spitballing.
That concludes your nominations.
County Executive, have any comments?
No comments.
Board members?
Yes, Madam Chair, yeah, actually, I had some comments, but I, on just a couple items that were information on the agenda first, if I could. On item 79.
79, Sacramento County Department of Transportation. This is the contract for the Rosemont Area Streetlight Project, the rejection of all bids, and re-advertising of the project.
Right, and understanding why that the bids came in significantly above what was the engineer's estimate. And I've talked with DOP staff about this, and about maybe looking at a different approach to project, and I know that this would give direction to re-advertise in December of this year. I did just want to, and maybe you can carry this back now, ask, we did a couple of fairly large community meetings, neighborhood meetings, large in the sense, we had, you know, 40, 50 folks turn out that were pretty enthusiastic, once we kind of got through some of the detail about what this would entail. And I actually received some communication from folks yesterday that were, you know, disappointed that we were rejecting bids, they understand why, but it's certainly very interesting. So we did develop a newsletter, so I would hope that as a part of that, and I communicate this as well, but that we would inform folks as to reasoning why, that we're going to be coming back, and that we're looking at, we're still very committed to doing the project. So that was the point I wanted to make. This just is our normal notification, it doesn't really tell people that, people pick up and follow our agenda, so I wanted to note that. And then, secondly, on the information item, item 82.
82. Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, the calendar year 2017 red light photo enforcement program.
And I would just note with this one, that this was a report back this board had asked for, showed up an information item, and we received some communication, at least a couple of folks who tracked this, who aren't necessarily supportive red light enforcement, but the, the point made, at least in the communication from folks, was is that apparently the contract expires at the end of this calendar year, I don't know that to be, be the case, but I would think that before we actually go back out to that, I don't know if it's under the sheriff's purview, or it's under this board's authority, obviously, the contract has to be approved by this board, that we would have a little further conversation about the program. I think the report was good, it showed reduction in collisions, and hopefully some safer locations. Although some of the data, that a couple of the folks that wrote to us, at least one of them, they submitted data from some other California cities that didn't show a similar outcome. And again, not to dispute what, what we are finding here, if it's safer for our residents, then that's what we're to be concerned about. But I just wanted to pass it on now, I don't know if you saw, the communication came from a couple of the folks that wrote in response to the information item on the agenda, so.
I've not, but that is a topic of conversation with the sheriff's office for this contract.
Okay, all right. Thanks. And then, Madam Chair, I just had a comment, under supervisor's comments. And I know that your offices probably also received during the July 4th ramp-up to the Independence Day holiday, but also subsequent to that, I trust. Again, this year, I think with a growing number of incidents, the, in particular, the use of illegal fireworks, some of the media coverage that was shown on television on July the 4th, but that subsequently played the next day, showed some California cities, but it showed Sacramento in the backdrop, and looked like bombs bursting in air. And from illegal fireworks, mortars, M80s, and one of the other reports that I saw said that there were 35 reported calls, you know, for service. Obviously, the fire department responds when there's fires that occur that are due to fireworks or other, other incidents, but certainly with fireworks being a major factor in some of the incidents. But, you know, what caught my attention was there were no arrests made. And I think that the consequence, people talk about banning fireworks, and some of the feedback that I got, and kind of fallout in, you know, days leading up to and since then, people asking for a ban on fireworks, that may be something this board certainly would want to take into consideration, other communities have done it. But I think the problem is deeper than, than just ban on fireworks. A lot of the fireworks we've, we've seen that have caused situations that have been unsafe, fires in homes, and certainly injury to, to folks. And the proliferation of illegal fireworks, not just in the sales, and we saw the fire departments did, did obviously some recovery, and some arrests were made for folks that were actually marketing the materials. It seems to me that we, we as a community, need to really take an examination about what the consequences are for the use of illegal fireworks. And some of these that, again, what you would see in probably shows that you pay to go, or go to community events and see. And I guess what I wanted to suggest, and I've mentioned this to the county executive, at least one of my colleagues on the board, that beyond, you know, this discussion about banning fireworks, because I don't think that does it, if there's no consequence, whether safe and sane fireworks, or illegal ones, then I don't see what's going to stem the activity. And, and so I think it's going to require a concerted look, and I know, I think you, Chair Peters, last year raised the issue, maybe with...
Couple of years ago.
Yeah. And, and, you know, had fire chiefs involved. I think it requires law enforcement, I think it requires our district attorney, and, and our, you know, police chiefs, as well as our, our sheriff, and the fire personnel. And now, I'd certainly leave it to your discretion, but I think we need to take the lead on this, because, again, just responding and saying, well, yeah, it's a problem, and then telling people, well, you know, the, you know, there's already a ban on these things, but if there's no consequence, and there's nobody being arrested, nobody being cited, then you might as well just say there's no rules, because we're not doing anything about it. And yet, people are in peril, and again, I don't want to overstate it, nor understate it. And I guess it's my view, coming off of the July 4th holiday this year, that we ought to really do a serious examination, and I would hope that this board be interested in maybe taking the lead to have our county executive entertain, you know, bringing law enforcement, certainly our prosecutors, maybe even some folks from the industry, but certainly, those that are already banned are the ones that are the greatest problem that I see. There's a fire potential, obviously, with ones that are, you know, sold at the, the neighborhood stands and so forth, but the preponderance of those that are going up in the air, that, you know, causing injury, and calls for service, and then with no consequence, that makes no sense to me, so.
Mr. Kennedy?
I'd just like to follow up on that. And there was actually a house in District 2 that was significantly damaged by fire. And I was actually flying over Sacramento during it, and it looked like a war zone. It was, it was bizarre. To me, and we get the calls, we all, all five of us get the calls every year, and, you know, nobody has a solution to it. And I think, you know, my opinion is, is that, you know, instead of going after... And I think, you know, my opinion is, is that, you know, instead of going after the users, because that's almost impossible, I mean, how do you find them?
It is impossible.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, that we go after the distributors, or, I mean, they're selling these things somewhere. And I will say, though, that this year was the first year that I'm aware that there was a joint task force that included city police, sheriff's department, Metro Fire, to actually, you know, tackle this. So that's a step in the right direction, but I think a concerted effort has to be made. These things are coming from somewhere, and we need to go out...
Nevada and Mexico.
We need to, we need to find out, you know, where that's happening, because going after the users is just, we're going to be chasing our tails.
Well, maybe we could have some information back on the task force. I hadn't heard about a joint task force, but maybe that would be helpful, in, you know, in briefing, it's not in the board meeting, and we'll decide whether we want to go forward on it.
There's a task force, and then the fire chiefs have also been meeting on this. It's more on the user side, not where it's coming from. So I think I can report back on both, what the fire chiefs have been doing, what the task force is doing. I think your point Supervisor Natoli, I think the DA, that's basically the feedback we always get, is if we find these folks...
Or make arrests, if nothing's going to happen.
Nothing's going to happen.
Right. You can't put people in jail if they steal a gun from your house, how are you going to, if they set off fireworks?
But one of the things that Don and I had a good conversation about, when he brought this to my, this concern, which I think is a valid one to my attention, is if we were just to kind of limit the conversation, or the initial conversation, to what is under the purview or the control of this board, my understanding is that fines relative to the penalty for setting off illegal fireworks are within our purview. And why couldn't we do what, you know, other agencies in different contexts have done in the past, with set, by setting some extremely painful, high penalties, measured in the thousands of dollars, tens of thousands if necessary? And that combined with perhaps plainclothes operations next Fourth of July, and use the whole year in front of us to plan carefully around that, both the penalty side, the increased penalty side, and the fact that anyone that dares to set off these types of fireworks is going to be putting themselves at great financial risk, to the tune of perhaps $25, $30,000, who knows? But to me, that, if that is in fact what is in our control, and I would expect county council's office to, you know, inform us about that, to me, that's one way you might be able to make potential users think twice about doing what we all have seen, not just this year, but in recent years.
I think if the board's comfortable, what I can do, all the input that we receive, is to see what's at our disposable, disposal, what can we do, and give you a report back on that.
Okay. Is that it, Mr. Natoli? Mr. Cern?
Thank you. I just wanted to publicly thank Brian Rivas, who recently came off of our SCOWE board, who served for, I believe, two terms. Brian represented District, or Area 2. He also served as the alternate for my office on our library authority board, so I wanted to publicly thank him for his service in both those respects. And then I also, in the same breath, wanted to issue strong congratulations to Karina Telemontes, who won the seat somewhat late, due to it being a very close race for, for Area 2 to fill that seat. And as was probably noted by my colleagues, she has now been officially appointed as my alternate for the library authority, so congratulations to Karina. Looking forward to working with you.
Okay, I have some adjournments. Does anybody else?
I'd like to congratulate myself for winning reelection.
There you go.
Would you like some applause?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I have two adjournments. First, in memory of Rhea Dariotis Brunner, who unexpectedly passed last month, the age of 62. For many of us, the Dariotis name is well-known for the family-owned restaurant, The Old Spaghetti Factory, where Rhea worked for many years, both in the front of the house, and as one of the best servers they ever had, according to restaurant folklore. After graduating from UCLA, she settled in Sacramento, pursuing dual master's degrees in social work and public administration at Sac State, ultimately becoming a lobbyist for California Association of Rehabilitation Facilities. She was dedicated to our community, and served on the Crocker Art Museum Board from 2008 to 2018, including two years as president. She was a former board member and president of WEAVE, the National Charity League, and the Del Paso Foundation Board. In addition, she served on the Sacramento County Grand Jury. She was a passionate golfer, and had three holes in one to prove it, and numerous golf championships. Her joyful presence and her community involvement will be missed by her family and the extensive circles of friends, as well as the community at large that benefited from her volunteerism. So I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Rhea Dariotis Brunner. One more I would like to talk about, last year, Sacramento area lost a real estate pioneer with the passing of John Reinon. He came to Sacramento after Stanford Law School, working for the California Division of Highways, the predecessor to Caltrans. Not entirely satisfied with the practice of law, began to conduct real estate transactions in his after-hours, initially investing in fourplexes, and later joined in a partnership with Chris Bardas, a business union that would last half a century, and the rest, as they say, is history. Reinon and Bardas and its various affiliated entities would build thousands of homes and develop thousands of acres, both in the Great O Sacramento area and Northern Nevada. He was a leader who listened much more than he talked, he was a quiet man. He was noted for his, nearly, his astonishing calm when faced with challenges, including when he faced near personal financial ruin during the 2008 crash. Over the years, he took up a myriad of leisure, everything he tackled, he worked to master, including sport fishing. And in 2006, he took second place in the Bisbee's Black and Blue, the world's largest Marlin tournament. He was a remarkable gentleman and a true pioneer who helped change the landscape of the Sacramento area, providing housing for many families. So I'd like to ask that we adjourn in his name, too, so...
Madam Chair?
Uh-huh.
On the subject of the passing of John Reinon, who was not only a dear friend to me and probably all of us, but he also was my boss for several years when I worked at...
Oh, that's right.
Windcrest Homes in the mid and late 80s, and also, again, as Reinon and Bardas Communities in the early 2000s. And I know that many of us were away for our break, but I did have a chance to attend his memorial at the Crocker. It was very, very well done, a lot of good stories. Both Jack and Cristo, his two sons, gave wonderful tributes to their father, and so I'm glad that we're recognizing his contribution to our community, and certainly regret his passing, and give our best to his family.
He was one of the first real estate developers I loaned money to when I was starting off in commercial real estate, and when he was partnered with Chris Bardas. And that was when they were doing, what do they call them, Woody walk-ups?
Yeah, you can still see him around Midtown.
Yeah, there's still some of them still here. And they drove around in an old Cadillac convertible, and, God, they were fun.
Who said, you know, Cedar shingles were just for ruse?
Right. Yeah. He was a fun man. So today, we adjourn in memory of Rhea Dariotis Brunner and John Reinon. Oh, you did?